Twenty-sixth Stearns County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. First, we'll do the roll call.
Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Pereski.
Present.
Commissioner Bertram.
Here.
Commissioner Notch.
Here.
And District Four is vacant yet.
Okay, please join us, rise and do the moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The agenda, do we have any changes with the agenda?
None from administration, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so members, if there's no changes or additions to the agenda, a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Notch moves the agenda, Commissioner Pereski seconds it. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. The agenda's approved. The consent agenda has twelve items on it, so a motion to approve the consent agenda would be in order.
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Clark moves the consent agenda item, Commissioner Pereski seconds it. I don't, I'm not going to poll them, but on E, if we could have more information on E three, Mike, on the administration paid family leave, would like to know what that cost is with that. I think the members all would like to know that, what the estimated cost is, but we don't need to do that now. And then the, well, I've got another one, I'll talk to you after the meeting. So, motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. No further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda is approved. First item of business is the emergency management. Erin, welcome.
Your chair commissioners, Erin Hughes from Emergency Management. I'm here to, with some members of the Public Safety Foundation today to talk about an exciting project that we have underway to enhance our weather equipment throughout the county. I want to give just a brief introduction to what we do and what we're talking about and then let them share a couple of items here. We have been well into the weather situation and the weather business for decades here in Stearns County. We provide training in coordination with Central Minnesota Skywarn and the National Weather Service annually to all of our public safety departments. We coordinate with them before and during severe weather events and then we as well help to be able to provide tools and resources such as radars and weather equipment to make sure that we're getting good information that makes it actionable for us to make decisions. Right now, we have eight weather stations positioned throughout the county and I did provide a map with your information today so that you're able to see the current locations. And in partnership with the Public Safety Foundation, we are looking to add ten more weather stations throughout the county as well as provide handheld anemometers to all of our public safety departments. The benefit of that handheld anemometer is to help with gaining actual measured wind speeds during severe weather events, but also being able to apply that information when we're hosting community events, parish festivals, things like that throughout the county, when we have tents and different canopies that are up that become a public safety concern even when it's well below severe weather thresholds. So, I reached out to the Public Safety Foundation, this is what we're working on, this is what we're looking to do, and they said we'd be happy to partner. So, I'll turn it over, if you want to introduce yourselves and share any information, that would be great.
Good morning commissioners, my name is Ken Bellick, I'm the board chair currently of the Public Safety Foundation and with me is Jennifer Odette, our executive director. When this came across our radar, so to speak, we jumped at the opportunity, this aligns perfectly with the Public Safety Foundation's mission, we've been around for over a decade now and we're here to specifically assist the communities in the greater St. Cloud area and beyond and we are happy to provide funding for this opportunity should be approved.
Want to add something?
No, I, other than, we were talking earlier and this is an opportunity also for us as the Public Safety Foundation to really build those connections outside of greater St. Cloud, so we're really looking forward to identifying even more occasions to be able to work together with our first responders and continue to build a strong and safe community throughout central Minnesota.
You say in the report that, first of all, what a wonderful thing to double, I mean, Stearns County's a big county and certainly we're going to be able to double that and that, that's great. How many public safety departments are there in the county? So there's going to be, what, nineteen that are going to be covered? How many more are there?
There are a handful throughout the county, we have many, many departments that provide public safety services. If you consider those that come into the county as well that are maybe primarily housed somewhere else, it's nearing fifty departments. And so, when we look at this, these weather stations require power and internet connection in order to be able to broadcast that and so we've met, been met with some challenges in communities to be able to have good access to both a building where we can put it, a location where we can actually put the weather equipment and then that wifi and electricity. So as we were talking again before the meeting, we're going to continue to work to expand and include even more, but these ten right now are good, solid locations that meet all the requirements you need in order to add them into the program.
And maybe some of those areas that more challenge is probably where they might be more needed too and more rural settings that, you know, that notice, so yeah, that would be a good thing to look into. But, yeah, this is, this is certainly a good thing. This is emergency services, what do you have for staff again, three, four?
There is five of us.
Five. Again, it's one of the best kept secrets, I believe, and I learned a lot about it in the last two and a half years, but I tell people, we, they really don't know what is involved and that you even exist. Train derailments, we had one by, you know, Watkins, you know, storms, emergency services, the plans and how they're interconnected with the departments and everything, it's really more involved than what people understand and yet at a flip of a switch, you're there when it is, so I commend you for doing that. Any questions from Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very glad that you're here, thank you for this, the partnership and the community and communities have grown and this is a great step forward. A very small question I have is given, with the weather stations, will that also be tracking particulates, given the smoky air that we've been having, are we, is that going to help enhance, like help us get down to a more specific area or is this really just broader weather?
This is primarily broader weather, we're going to be able to look at things like precipitation, temperature, wind speeds. It does help us in being able to share that information with the National Weather Service. For example, if we are seeing wind speeds that are sixty-five miles an hour but we don't have a warning yet, that threshold has been met and so in communication with the National Weather Service, they can enhance those warnings to be able to get better information to people. That air quality is very particular science and very particular process and so, maybe someday we'll get into that, but not quite yet.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I've been surprised there's only like twenty stations in the whole state, which is kind of crazy given how many of our summers, our beautiful Minnesota summers have been impacted. But again, thank you for this work and recognize that there may be other, other comments, I'd just like to move acceptance of the funding.
Can we get a second for that?
I'll get a second on that and then, quick question here.
Commissioner Pereski.
Taking a look at, at the map on the second page there, you know, right there on Ashley and Raymond Township, right on the edge in Pope County is, I think Westport, maybe only a mile to the way, would that location actually help cover that whole kind of a blank area that's there?
You know, that is a great question. When we get out to the western side of Stearns County, it proves to be challenging sometimes for weather because we may not have information coming out of Pope County or we may not have warning and then we do have a pretty large area there that we need to keep eyes on the sky to know what's happening, so we could certainly work on...
Check in with Westport.
Yeah, we could certainly work on another partnership.
Okay.
And Westport, of course, is in Pope County, but Padua, I want you to have to do if you want to know what's going on in Padua, it's called Dave Rooney at the Padua Pub, he'll tell you what's going on.
That might be a good location.
That's a weather report out that direction. Commissioner Notch.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair, and thanks Erin, you know, for, and Public Safety for these efforts because it, it definitely, I think, will, will help overall and I know Erin's contacted me multiple times when there's weather events that are popping up and also, they also participate with Farm Service Agency, you know, also has a committee set up, you know, for basically reporting disaster type issues on farms. So, you know, you guys are part of that as well, so, so yeah, they do a lot of stuff that nobody really knows that you do, which is much appreciated, thank you.
It's great to see the collaboration of the foundation and what we're trying to do, so thank you. So a motion's been made and seconded to accept the funding from the Public Safety Foundation for weather equipment, there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Now we're going to take a picture, all of us, I'd like to do the full board when we With that, we'll recess the regular meeting and the open, the human resources board meeting. And the first item is the Melissa and the Human Services Consent Agenda, so let's approve the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Notch moves, Commissioner Clark seconds it.
We should, we should really, you shouldn't make it this easy on Melissa. That was just my comment.
Let's pull a few items and then if you want to. A motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda item, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, and then we'll go into, well, before we do that, I'm going to forget this if I don't do it now, Allison was nice enough to give us a cookie, Bull Spring Bakery Cookie. I'm saying this now that Melissa maybe catches on, that that doesn't hurt when you're on the agenda, but thank you Allison for the fall leaf cookie. Melissa.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners, Melissa Huberty, the Human Services Administrator, and there is one remaining item on the Human Services Agenda and it's a regular board agenda item, which is I one on page one hundred, and it's to accept the 2025 annual update on the opioid community, or Community Advisory Committee, or OCAC we've been calling it, those projects from this past year, so you'll get an update on those projects. Then we're also here to request board approval to open up a call for proposals for new projects for 2025 and to request board approval for continuation funding of six of the projects that are existing. So we're here today to share that information about those existing projects and that were approved last year and we have two very special guests with us today who actually received opioid funding in the past year and they're going to share their experiences and some of their impacts that they actually made in the community with this funding. So I'm going to turn it over to Janet Golagowski, who's our Human Services Director in, or Public Health and our Chief Strategist, and with us we have Hodan Omar, Omar, who's the Director of HOYA, our organization, and Jerry Sparby, who's the founder of the Yes Network. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Janet Golagowski.
Morning, welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners, again Janet Golagowski, HS Director for Public Health and also your Chief Strategist for opioid committee. So, I'm here today and I'll keep it short because of course what we really want to hear from are the people who are doing the work, Hodan and Jerry with the groups of kids that they're working with. I'm here just to kind of give us a little review and reminder of where we started and what we're continuing to work towards. So, to assure that our opioid dollars are being spent in a way that ensures decisions are fair, we addressed four, five, sorry, five principles right from the beginning that we approved, but we want to make sure that we're prioritizing community-driven needs and that will be evidenced by the projects that we're talking about today. Thank you. So, and then we want to make sure that we're using evidence-based practices to help us guide that spending. We wanted to make sure that we invested, especially initially, in youth prevention. We all know that prevention is hard to measure and could take some time to see those results, so that was something we wanted to get off the ground immediately. We also wanted to make sure that we focus on disparate impacted communities. Disparate impacted communities, we identify those through evidence-based information and we know from previous data who, who those communities most likely are going to be and we want to address our prevention efforts there. So as you may recall, in 2023, we created that, our Stearns County Opioid Response Plan, lots of, lots of words there. Essentially what we did is we created a external community advisory committee, representatives from all of the districts across the county, a variety of sectors are represented in that membership and we did some preliminary planning and work with that group to get it off the ground, so we meet regularly and we're at the point where we're planning to maybe update our bylaws for the next few years. We also created a internal policy committee and that policy committee consists of our county administrator, Dr. Williams, Assistant County Administrator, now Jill Sermeyer, Melissa Huberty as the Human Services Administrator, myself, as well as Erin Hughes, our Emergency Management Director. Part of her role is also that public health preparedness planning, currently we are in collaboration with emergency management to make that happen. So the advisory committee and the policy committee focus on local project priority. We focus on, again, a preference for evidence-based projects, what would have a direct impact to our community members, as well as we want the projects to align with one of the three pillars required by the National Opioid Abatement Settlement Funding. Those three pillars as reminder are prevention, harm reduction, and recovery. I wanted to share with you all just a quick, high-level view of where our funding has been used. I want to make sure that this chart that you see here is reflecting how methodical and mindful our approach has been to settle, to spending the opioid settlement funding. We wanted to make sure that we are approving projects, working with residents, with community members, and with youth. And we wanted to make sure that we're balancing our due diligence along with assuring that we are able to help our community members use funding to address the issues in their communities. The next few slides that I'm going to share are illustrating six projects that you had approved and what they are accomplishing. Currently, our opioid Community Advisory Committee, OCAC, is, has been receiving presentations from each of the projects and hearing this information as well. So, one of the first one is the Central Minnesota Violent Offender Task Force, Nate Stewart was the lead on this and they purchased a one-time piece of machinery, it's called the MX nine oh eight device, I prefer a piece of machinery although I'm sure that's not quite technical. And what this piece of machinery does is helps identify chemicals that might be on-site or that they come across in a way that helps protect folks. So Nate did demonstrate this device at an OCAC meeting, you may have seen this on the opioid dashboard, it's pretty cool, he has been able to share that with other entities around the state and I do believe we might be the first that has that. Secondly, ultimate success insight, as you can see, they've complied with the culturally relevant education, we're looking at recovery resources, they do peer support and youth engagement activities. Currently, they have eighteen unique workshops and events reaching six hundred and thirty-five youth with sixty percent of those participants identifying a coping skill by the third month. Coping skills are inherent in building that resiliency base to not enter that gateway of drugs. Secondly, we have a Sartell Police Department, they're looking for a speaker to reach the junior high youth, the presentation will be held sometime during the twenty-five and twenty-six school year. You can see there that there's going to be a staff follow-up and some conversations with the youth after that presentation, so to assure that that interactivity happens. Again, most of those are, most of what you've seen so far is focused on that education, which is early, helps with early prevention. Next, we have Metro Treatment of Minnesota and now we're, now we're moving into that harm reduction arena, that pillar that we talked about. So, currently, they have approximately eight patients enrolled, so very specific individual client services when you're talking about harm reduction in this arena. They've also expanded their income eligibility threshold to reach more people and have been very active with this. And then, after that, the next two presenters that I have here with you will describe their own projects in person.
Welcome.
Good morning, members of the chair, sorry, and the commissioners, my name is Hodan Omar, I'm the Director of HOYA Hour, I apologize, I haven't done this before if I'm mumbling. So HOYA Hour is a nonprofit that runs in central Minnesota for the East African communities, specifically with the Somali community. This grant has done a lot and great work for us, especially when it comes to the stigma in our culture in the Somali community, trying to hide from the reality and that's what we did by hosting smaller events, one-on-one groups to enlarge into the community where we would host meetings and then real people who's been through this, walked through the stage, who's now going clean from the opioid, just providing, you know, yes, I know we're hiding from the community, but it's there, so what I try to do is show the real stories that we have it, let's sit together and find a way that we can get help and this is what the grant has done for us so far.
Thank you.
So, as I said, their goal is to reduce stigma and additionally, the HOYA's, Hodan's group with HOYA Hour Organization has had a hundred and twenty-nine attendees and she has with her today as well, her program coordinator and her youth coordinator. So some of that availability of these funds has helped her expand a lot of that education and prevention into the community with folks who have direct access to those community members.
Yes.
Come back again sometime and make a presentation, you know how to do it now.
Yes, I think this is the first one, I will definitely get used to this.
Thank you.
We did let her know that that would probably be one of the asks. And then next we have Yes Network and Jerry, I think you have presented before.
Thank you for this opportunity and I'd like to start out with something that happened just two weeks ago. One afternoon I was in the office and this kid comes in and he stands inside the door, just stands there, limp, and I looked at him and he looked back at me and he said, "I'm supposed to talk to Jerry." I said, "Well, I'm Jerry." I said, "Who sent you?" "The guy at the smoke shop, okay." He said, "So, can you give me a clue as to why you're here?" He said, "Well, I've overdosed on opiates twice, a third one might be the last one." So, I then asked him, I said, as he was standing there, I said, "Would you mind if I, you held my hand?" And he lifted my hand, I said, "If you're comfortable, if not," and he laid his hand in mine and it was like putting a pile of sticks in my hand, there was no feeling in his body, no feeling at all and he's, he was just numb and as he told his story is, he was in the top ten percent of his graduating class, went to NDSU, had never had friends, had never, and I, as I said, just no feeling was part of his life and as he got to NDSU, he decided he was going to try and find friends and so he started on marijuana and then ended up in opiate. And I, I bring that up because what we're doing is helping kids, one, feel, start to feel again because so many kids have stopped feeling due to stress. The other thing is building friends, when you have friends in a community that supports you, I think magic happens and, and without it, we make bad choices sometimes, okay? So, we have started in Recore, Haynesville, Eden Valley, I'm sorry, and Kimball last year and Melissa, you want to hand it to me? We started, well, I should say several years ago and we've been in elementary classrooms and what we do is we go in for about twenty minutes, we get, we clap the hands, we get the kids connected to us, we, we play a game and we teach them to breathe and you say, "Teach them to breathe." Well, what we found all across the United States is kids are dealing with a level of stress that they've stopped breathing through their, started, stopped breathing through their mouth, noses and started breathing through their mouth. Everybody says, "Well, athletes breathe through their mouth," and I say, "Yes, they do," but they do that because they need a large quantity of air and they need to hold that tension in their body. When you breathe through your nose, the warm air massages the brain and it reduces the stress in the whole body. And so when we're in the classrooms, we'll, we'll do different exercises every day, but it's getting to them, breathing into their diaphragm and release and, and what our goal is to try and get teachers to do this multiple times a day and, and to retrain them and, and also we've been working with parents who try and get them to put a patch over their mouth or do something to get them to retrain for when they sleep at night. But anyway, the other piece that we started this year was leadership. What we found is, back to the kid that showed up, he had never done anything for anybody, including his siblings, other than take care of himself and I truly believe one of the ways to heal is through giving. And so, we started a leadership group at Recore last year, we had thirty-eight kids show up and no, they weren't all the National Honor Society. And, and they, we would go in and we'd play with them every other week, play, getting them, teaching them how to play together, how to be together in a non-competitive way. And then what we did in the spring is we took that group and took them over to the elementary school and let them lead the elementary kids in activities, exercises, getting them to connect. And that program has been phenomenally successful, in fact, this coming year now Recore is putting, going to have us do all the senior class, we're going to be in their civics class teaching citizenship and connections. And we're also working it with Haynesville, we're going to be in their leadership class at the high school and we're throughout the school year and again, we're going to try and touch as many kids as we can, get the high school kids to touch the elementary kids and build a community. So, I, I'm excited about the work we're doing, but the one thing that I, I'm hopefully that our next step is that is working with teachers. What I find everywhere I go is that teachers are so stressed out and people say, "Oh, that's why, that's their job." Well, I also helped with the fires out in Los Angeles and when I was out there, what I, at the clinic, their line out the door was twenty, twenty-five deep and there was parents bringing their kids for medication to try and get through this whole trauma of the fires and as we're working with... And as we're working with, with the parents, they said, "Well, once the kid gets back to school, the teachers will take care of them." And, and that is that mindset, that these teachers can do everything and anything. And it's, these teachers are so stressed out. So, at the end of July, I was able to get a group of teachers from Los Angeles and I brought them to the ranch. I also work with veterans, first responders, policemen with trauma, PTSD. And what I found with these teachers when they showed up, you know what? They had the exact same symptoms as these veterans and policemen and first responders. And we keep ignoring it like it's going away. And they've just been living in it and it keeps giving up, getting up and up. So that is my next effort is how do we get that down in teachers? Because we can't heal the kids as long as teachers are up here, right? Anyway, so, I'm giving you a little more than two minutes here, but anyway. I, I absolutely think we have no choice but to keep moving forward. We gotta build communities. And last night, when I was, or yesterday afternoon, when I was delivering meals, I had an 18-year-old that I'd worked with five years ago. He come up and said, "Oh, Jerry, it's good to see you. Can I work for you?" And I said, "Well, maybe." And so I'm busy handing out meals and doing things. And then, as I'm putting my stuff back in the vehicle, I see him over in the parking lot. And when you're a principal, you have rabbit ears, so you hear everything that's going on. And I listened to the conversation. And here was a 30-some-year-old sitting in a car, trying to talk this kid into selling drugs for him. And I thought, "Okay, this kid needs to come and work for me." Because there, there are too many of these other options out there. And it's, it truly is about adding to their community. So, anyways, the last page shows our numbers. This year, we did something different. We were in St. Cloud schools in every summer school classroom. And then we also got, hired three more teachers than we normally do. And we went into four neighborhoods every afternoon and got the kids outside playing. I tried to do that before using high school kids, but I found that without leadership, and I say leadership, kids don't have enough experience. They gotta have a lot of guidance. And they can be successful and they can add value. But I found that if I didn't have teachers or people who had a skill set of being able to organize kids and set them up, that these high school kids aren't gonna be successful. So, anyway, we did that in the neighborhoods, in four neighborhoods this summer. And then we were in all the classrooms in St. Cloud, all the summer school, elementary classrooms, I should say, providing support for the teachers every day. So, we would work with the kids. So anyway, my, our numbers are there. I've got the report here. I've told you my stories. Thank you for your time. If you've got questions, I'm, I'm wide open. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the presentations. Obviously, we all interact with people in different ways. And I be, would be remiss in not saying Jerry and I met in 1980, so I've known him for 45 years. He's been in education his entire life. And what Huddle Up and the Yes Network has done, I've been familiar with it for years, is unbelievable. And then what they tap into resources of community organizations, private donors, you know, a number of things. And the hand example, you told a one story about the, the young man that came up to you to ask if he could hug you. And you said, "Do you realize the rest of the kids in this room might judge you or might make fun of you?" He said, "I don't care." And by the time you were done, everybody in that room got up to hug you. You know, but one, one young man needed a hug. And the sad part is, we all, and those societal issues are unbelievable. And, and people don't like or don't know how to deal with mental health or those kinds of issues. They don't know how to, how to deal with it. But, so God bless you for what you do. I'm familiar with your program, becoming familiar with the other programs, but God bless you for what you do. Any questions from the presenters or for Melissa? The one question I have, Melissa, from you, so you're, you're asking to go out for additional programs. So with the current programs, it's a, is it a five-year?
No.
No?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, what we're asking for is to fund six of the existing programs, the ones that we went through today, so they can continue at least for another year and then also go out for a call for proposals.
Got it.
And then the other thing too is we just want to run through a list of lessons learned because it may seem to, it may answer some of the questions you might have about contracting. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that we end up doing, that we ended up doing that we were a little surprised at. So it took longer to do the process than we thought a year ago when we were here. So we just want to run through that so that you're aware. And then that'll help maybe answer some of the questions you might have. So really quickly, I already hit the first bullet point, but the contract process was a lot longer and more involved than anticipated. And that's partly because we're also trying to make sure everybody's doing their outcomes, they have written out, and that we're preventing any potential fraud, waste, and abuse. We're in that era. We want to make sure we're doing due diligence for both the providers as well as the community and us. So, took a little longer. We also know the grants don't always line up with the budget and planning, particularly with the schools. Sometime, they're, they're not, they're not getting started until like a month or, I mean, they start school. But the people, by the time they know what projects they want, it's not always at this time of year. So we want to allow a little more time, especially for the school districts, to get their feet under them in the school year and then maybe ask in the first quarter of, of January. We also know that grantees needed more support from our staff to follow the process and to actually make sure they're actually doing what they need to do and that they have outcomes written and they have goals and we can see the outcomes. So a lot of administrative oversight that was a little more burdensome than we thought, but that's because we are trying to do really good due diligence on this and make sure we're doing, we're really watching the dollars and that they actually matter at the end. Finally, there was actually a lot more excitement for the projects and generated a lot of interest and a lot of national interest. We don't, we, we bias towards, we just wanna, like, we want it to be in Stearns County and so we're biasing towards those. We were just surprised that there was such a large interest in, in doing work here, I guess. So, with that, the ask is exactly what you said, Mr. Chair. It is, we're asking the board to, requesting approval for the board to let us open up a call for proposals for another round of funding. We would open those call for proposals up, we think in about the next month, and then go through the process. And hopefully, by quarter one, you know, in, you know, by January, we're starting to pick those proposals and we'd be back at the board to get approval for specific funding for those. And then at the same time, we're asking board approval to do continuation funding of the six projects that we talked about today, so they can do another year. And then we may want to, in future years, switch it up, like, do more multi-year. So it's a little less, if we think it's a really worthy, like, these projects are really worthy projects, we think, it would be good to come and say, "Can we have multi-year projects? We're not doing all this administration behind the scenes of, you know, taking up your time and our time." So that's an idea for the future, but, so that's the request for today.
Perfect. Any questions, Commissioner Notch?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Melissa, so when, what they continued funding or when they call for these projects, do they, I'm assuming they kind of give you a list, "Here's what we, what we want to do. Here's what we think it's gonna cost. Here's what we think outcomes are." That's kind of the ongoing projects plus the new ones follow the same type of scenario?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Notch, that's correct.
And you might want to explain for the public, Melissa, the opioid funding, you know, the award that the state got and how, just real quickly, this isn't taxpayer dollars.
Correct.
This is a settlement. You might want to just explain that a little bit.
Yeah, Mr. Chair Commissioners, and for the public to know, this is not government dollars at all. This is Big Pharma settlements and settlements that have happened where opioid producers had to pay a lot of money in a settlement to mitigate the harm that was caused. So it will be, we think about, in total, about 18 years of funding, but it's kind of front-loaded funding. So we anticipate that we got higher funding, and we will get higher funding in the first few years and it'll sort of wane over the 18 years, if it actually lasts 18 years. And the entire purpose is, is specific as we kind of went through the beginning of the proposal. You have to fit in these pillars. And, you know, it has to actually matter. And we hope that we actually are spending it in a way that, with community, tight communication with the community, having community-led, like these folks here, doing the work and it actually matters in the end.
How many times does your committee meet?
I can answer that question. So the opioid community advisory committee meets once a month. And our internal staff team, supported by the abatement dollars, does most of that preparatory work. Right now, they're working on marketing for the call for proposals, if approved today, and working on some very transparent criteria. We're looking more for evidence-based projects at this point that may have that larger span. So we do, and then also, myself and Mike Matnich, one of our public health supervisors, and I meet with the chair and vice chair every month as well. And we're working on building some subcommittees to assure that we can really start drilling down into some of this work more specifically as we get more projects underway.
Commissioner Clark?
I was, I was thinking, maybe we were ready for a motion, if that's okay?
Sure.
Well, I got a couple.
Well, then we can move to discussion. I mean, and I had something with that too. So I'm gonna move to accept the report, approve the advisory committee call for projects and approve the continuation funding for the six approved 2024 projects. And I particularly want to thank you, Ms. Omar and Mr. Spark, for the work that you are doing.
Commissioner Persky seconds it and has a question.
Correct.
Or four, I see.
Okay. Melissa, you touched on the, the projection of the funding. You know, I, I go back to one of the slides that shows the first couple of years of, of that. I don't know if we can go back to that. Is that possible?
Yep. I'm sure it is.
Okay. There we go.
And I learned something new today. Thank you, Commissioner Persky.
You're welcome. Yeah, just, I'm just curious, again, looking at those dollars coming in and the dollars going out. You know, it would be good to, to see a longer-range projection about where those dollars might actually be going. Because once the dollars run out, then what? Okay? We, are we gonna be stuck into a situation where we're obligated to continue funding? Or are those dollars going, but then you're losing projects? And if you're losing something that's highly available or valuable, what do you do about that? And so maybe looking at, again, what some of the sustainability's for those projects would be from, from the outside and not necessarily from the opioid money. And then also, it, it sounds like our, our attempts to address the issue of the opioid crisis, a lot of it is preventative. By all means, prevention is important. What about intervention? Those folks perhaps that we have that are incarcerated, those folks that we have that are at the homeless shelters, those folks that are, you know, struggling on the street, as far as maybe some type of intervention to help those folks? Just wondering what, what can maybe be done there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, Commissioner Persky, you bring up some really salient points in that we can't do everything all at once, right? So we want to get this prevention and education pieces up and running, see what folks like Jerry and Hodan can do for us. And then they can do that continuation while we work on, how are we gonna reduce the harm to our communities? How are we going to get folks who may be current users into recovery and support them through that time? Always with sort of that mindfulness about these funds aren't forever. We have to be thinking about what that is, that those questions contributed to that long contract process to assure that everyone really understood at the time that that was one-time money, that this continuation is one-time money as we continue to assess and try to figure out exactly those questions. And building a really strong community member advisory committee that shares some ideas and learning from surrounding substance use prevention folks who may also have a project. So we, we're kind of trying to interweave some of this stuff together towards that sustainability.
And we know that, you know, those interventions, keeping people out of incarceration, keeping people out of the shelters is savings to all of us as well.
Oh, yes.
And I see this as a jumpstart to helping, not helping, assisting in programs that already existed. And it kind of just jump-started them. And then what those organizations are doing and should be doing is looking for a funding, you know, from community foundations and community groups and people individually. If you do something good and people see that, that program will continue with or without opioid, opioid funding or government funding. I mean, but just sitting here, it just, you know, I can't help but think, I mean, the older I get, you look back and think, we, we really didn't deal with this 25 years ago. I mean, there was issues, but not to the level of this. The, the family structure, drugs, you know, in my opinion, the legalizing of marijuana is not gonna help. A gateway drug to make these, and even the conversation Jerry says he hears about this guy trying to, you know, get him to sell drugs. My God, we didn't deal with, well, at least not in Spring Hill we did. I mean, we, we dealt with some issues, but not, not, and societally, it's a decline of morals and a society. And it's too bad we, we need these services, but we all know that we do. Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, appreciate those comments. A couple of things, I suppose, for the public. I mean, the, the projects you all are working on are really important, especially as you're connecting other community members. And very much appreciate that. And, Mr. Chair, you brought up a few of the other entities. I'd add the school districts there, our health partners and all the rest of that, right? Our faith communities. Those are all important pieces. Part of what, again, for the public, and I know you all know this, is that these funds, it says opioids, and there are other, other drugs out there, whether it's meth or, or other kinds of things. And a lot of this stuff has been around and some of it's way more scary now. And, you know, I think a real question with these funds is gonna be, are we gonna have to tap into them in some other ways for some of the services that we're currently doing? The Commissioner Persky brought up, if the federal government and the state keeps cutting back, because those are also very important. So I have to admit, personally, I hope that we're gonna get, be able to not only use this as a jumpstart, but look at some bigger picture projects to build on, leverage what's already happening. And I am concerned that we may have to retrench a little bit and not get to some of those bigger picture pieces, just because we'll need to do some core services.
Anything else? If not, thank you for what you're doing. And please thank the other organizations for what they're doing. And, you know, share with them that we certainly support them and want them to continue to do what they're doing. So, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, thank you so much for that. And just to let you know what's coming down or going to happen in the next months, we will open up the call for proposals. We hope that we get a robust response. We are hoping to do a robust interview, you know, interview process and actually check everyone out. That takes longer than we learned than we thought it would take. So as soon as that process is done, we'll be moving it on their recommendations, the OCAC committee's recommendations for funding for next year, onto the policy committee. And then we'll be back at the board for your final approval at that time. And it could be the first quarter, you know, like January or something, depending upon how long that takes. So just so you know.
It may take time, but take that time because we want, what the last thing we want to do is give funding to an organization or something that doesn't deserve it or that misuses it. We don't need that. You know, none of us need that, so.
No, thank you so much.
Yep, you bet. So we'll close the Human Services Board meeting and we'll reconvene the county board meeting. And the first item up is Jody. That's the longest I've seen Jody not say something, so thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
You can make up for it now.
I have one item for you today, item L1. It's found on page 115 of your agenda packets. I'm asking the board to award the contract for SAP-073-590-007 and CP-073-157-21A. This is County Road 157 improvements within the city of Albany. As you may recall, you probably do, this project has been riddled with permitting issues. And so, working with the city of Albany, because they have some work next year that they don't want to interfere with this, or rather, they don't want this to interfere with the work next year, they had asked if we could break this project into two contracts. We worked with the Corps of Engineers to find those limits that the Corps would not have an issue with us proceeding on without their permit, because we are still waiting on that permit. They're still coordinating with SHPO on whether or not the Tressel Bridge, the old railroad Tressel Bridge, should be listed, despite our consultants stating it should not. So the board did authorize advertising for bids. It's July 29th meeting. The city of Albany, last Wednesday night, I was at their council meeting when they considered this. Despite the bids being significantly overestimated, and I'll get into that in a little bit, the council did unanimously recommend that the county board approve this. So when we broke this into two contracts, anytime you have municipal work, you know, within an urban area, it is generally more expensive than your rural reconstruction work. So we took the estimate, the unit price numbers from the full project and used it, probably unwisely, on, you know, those same numbers for this smaller project that is entirely within a municipal area. So the county's portion of this project, which is funded with sales tax dollars, the local option sales tax for transportation, is just over 1.46 million. And the city's share is just over 1.331 million. And the city's share is just over 1.331 million. We did help the city of Albany get an active transportation grant to at least help to fund that sidewalk extension, so they do have $285,000 of outside funding. So that helped them with this overall cost. So I am recommending that the board award the contract to CNL Excavating with a bid, overall bid, of $2,793,604.50. As you can see on page 116, all of those bids were at least 30% overestimate.
Up to date, you did a good job of coming in underestimated, but yeah, you really overdid it this time, so.
I made up for it.
You were doing well all year long, but it blew it here, so.
Some moved, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Motion's been made to approve the award to CNL Excavating.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Clark. Any further discussion?
Ouch.
Yeah.
Other than that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both sides sign.
Just as a side note, Mr. Chair Commissioners, I will be bringing to the board in the very near future a summary of where we are at with those sales tax dollars, what we've taken in, what we've funded, just so you can see what, how this may or may not impact that overall project list. And we'll take a look at those future estimates as well. But it may be something for a future board discussion.
Any updates on the projects that are going on?
Yes, it's a very exciting week. The County Road 2 in Minnesota Street Roundabout on the west side of St. Joseph will be opening by the end of the week. Phase 1 of the County Road 133 improvements, which include the roundabout resurfacing, and then the city of St. Joseph's Elm Street Extension, which connects over Northland Drive, that should be open by the end of this week, so phase 2 can start with a much shorter detour. County Road 2 Reconstruction South of Coal Spring is well underway. Third Street North, which is on the north side of the mall, our County Road 81, and I know that impacts a lot of people's commute to downtown, including mine, if that makes anybody feel any better. That's well underway. We are right now working on some drainage improvements at Wade Avenue, which is closed Wade Avenue. And then we'll have the full resurfacing between 12th Avenue and Wade Avenue.
And just so everybody knows, we're not the only ones that are doing road construction. We went, Jacob and I went to the cities last Saturday. And my God, the detours, we took 55 down and thought, well, I'm going to avoid that and come down 94 back. What was as bad on 94 back as it was on 55? It's all over, so I mean, it's road construction season, so.
Minnesota's second season, besides winter and snowplow.
I found my first roundabout on a trail. I didn't send you the picture yet, or did I? I can't remember. In Duluth, on a trail, there's a roundabout. So I thought, good God, now it's going on pedestrian trails. So that's how bad this is getting with the roundabouts. Commissioner Clark?
I figured while we were talking about maybe whether, I'm sure the city of St. Cloud did put it out there, but yesterday, as I was heading down south on 25th Avenue, just trying to go pick up a couple of things, all of a sudden, Third Street, Third Street, it was closed through. So like you had to detour off of Fourth Street, and you couldn't get back on until First. And I think for people who don't know that, given the railroad track crossings, it's just a very interesting area, but hopefully that will get done quickly. I don't know how long they're going to be doing that, but.
I'm not sure how long that will take, but I always say it's going to be worth it when it's all done.
It will be worth it, and we can be flexible. And thank goodness it's on the other side of the railroad tracks, at least from where I live.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day. We'll take a short break, and then we'll be back. Public hearing on parks for 10/20. We're going to skip ahead and do the MCIT annual update next, and then hopefully be closer to 10/20 by the time we can do the parks thing. So welcome for your flexibility. Welcome to Stearns County.
Thank you very much. Appreciate being here. I'm going to tell a joke on Mike. I appreciate him coming out into the lobby to grab me. He said, "We want you now." And I said, "Gosh, my wife's never even said that to me." So I know this is important, so I was glad to walk in when I did. As you mentioned, my name's Garrett Clay. I'm Executive Director of the Minnesota County's Intergovernmental Trust and really appreciate the chance to be here today to spend a little bit of time talking with you about the work that we do on your behalf, our partnership, and then happy to answer questions you might have at the end. Again, I think you think of MCIT as your insurer, and that's a good way to think of us. That's not necessarily how we describe ourselves. We're really a risk pool. MCIT was created in 1979 during a period where workers' compensation coverage for governmental entities across the country was really in crisis. Governmental entities like local governments in Minnesota, but it was true across the country at that time, just couldn't literally buy private insurance for workers' compensation, which is obviously a big problem. And so a couple of dozen counties here in Minnesota got together and decided to create a joint powers entity, MCIT, under Minnesota state law as a way to respond to that. A few years later, I think in '84, '85, we expanded our coverage to include property, casualty, and other lines of coverage. So we're happy to have you all as partners with us in that journey. As I mentioned, we're a risk pool. And so we share those risks from across 81 counties in Minnesota and about 400 other affiliated entities like Soil and Water Conservation Districts, historical societies, and the like. We're a public joint powers entity. And so we are a public entity, not unlike Stearns County. We're subject to all the Minnesota laws that relate to local governments as a result of that. Our board members are elected by you all. When those positions come open, we look to county commissioners across our membership to cast votes for those positions. And of course, Randy Schreifels has been, I think, Randy, you're our longest-serving board member at present. So really appreciate Randy's service and his strong contributions to the work that we do. We're not-for-profit, so we're a government entity. We don't have to supply returns on investment to shareholders. But when we do retain additional revenues beyond what our actuary suggests we keep, we return those, and the boards have been very good about returning those as dividends back to our members for the last 30-plus years. So we always say, "Don't get used to it," but there's a strong track record there for that. And I'll talk a little bit about dividends a little later in my presentation. We've got a partnership with our members. And if there's one takeaway point that I would leave with you, it's that our interests are really aligned with yours. It doesn't mean that we're always going to agree. There are coverage limitations on what we can do. But at a large level, really, our interests are aligned with the work that you do. We know that you're the only game in town when it comes to doing the work that you do for your citizens. You shifted that risk for some of those activities to us, automobile, workers' compensation, property. And so we gladly accept those and manage those risks for you. And obviously, and I want to talk about this in a little bit, and kind of the theme of our presentation this year is really partnership in managing risks. But we do have a partnership, and so we do things for you, but then there are things that we would like to have. You contribute to that partnership in return. And again, I'll talk a little bit about those. You're never going to hear from a salesperson from MCIT. There's no commissions that we pay. We're not going to be trying to upsell you coverage. The coverage that we have is the best that we can make available to you. And of course, because you get an opportunity to influence how our board thinks about that. because you get an opportunity to influence how our board thinks about that, that board is also thinking continuously about how do we adjust, change, improve our coverage for the benefit of local governments in Minnesota. We're very fiscally and financially secure, and I think that's another takeaway point I want to leave with you. Insurance has been kind of a tough area the last five years, I think particularly on the heels of the pandemic. But we're going to be here for you, for every county that we serve, regardless of what's happening in the community. And so, we're here to provide that security and do that in a financially responsible manner. I mentioned our work as a partnership, and so I want to highlight some areas where that partnership is really effective. We know, for example, that you're continually being challenged by your residents, by your citizens, to make decisions, thinking about programming in a different way, creative solutioning. That's really what you're all about. And sometimes you get to step out of your comfort zone and try new things, and this is where I think our coverage also comes into play. So, as you make decisions about new things, entering into agreements, creating new programs, certainly see us as a resource in that. Think about how your coverage that you have with us applies to those new programs, those new challenges, those new solutions you're putting in place. Reach out to us, and I know you do that, have done that for years. And I think with Jake, your new risk manager, that will continue on as well. So, see us as a resource in that way. Some of that work will involve contracts, and certainly vendors are often trying to find ways to shift risks away from the vendor back onto the county, back onto the local government. And we're seeing contracts come to us all the time, not asking for legal advice, because we don't give that. That's your county attorney's job. But certainly, we've got experience looking at risk management within those contracts and can give you some advice as it relates to how to contain those risks. Cybersecurity, obviously, I know that's top of mind for you as it is for every local government across the country. We've got resources available, but I know you're working hard with your staff to make sure that your systems are tight and up to date, but also doing the hard work that they need to do in order to serve your residents and your citizens every day. You're working hard to make safety a cultural item in your employee community. And those safety efforts help make the workplace safe. That reduces claims. It reduces costs of claims as well. So, again, something that we've got resources to provide to help support that work. Take advantage of our training. We often provide no-cost or low-cost options for our members. Really want to encourage you, as commissioners, your staff, to take full advantage of those trainings. We've had land use training. We've got human resources training, cybersecurity training. Take full advantage of those opportunities as well. Take advantage of our risk management services as well. I think Joe Saminsky of our risk management staff is your point of contact. And again, I know Jake will be in communication with him. Again, our interests are aligned with yours, and we want to support your work. So, call us. We're here to answer your questions and be a resource for you. I want to jump to page two. I'm not going to read through the handout, and I know you've got this electronically, but I want to just hit a few highlights along the way. The first one here is the chart on the top of page two. One of the things we do to keep our program offerings financially sound is we purchase our own insurance called reinsurance, and it's really focused predominantly at helping us manage catastrophic loss, whether it's a hailstorm, it's a windstorm, might be a fire, or might be an accident on a vehicle standpoint. There might be losses that individual employees experience unfortunately in the line of duty. We have a backstop, and that's the reinsurance programs that we have in place. And that's just critical. You'll see in that chart on the top of the second page, the upward bending curve. That blue line is our property reinsurance. That's one of our largest, single largest expenses that we have. We're up to, on this chart, in 2025, $4.8 million in our property reinsurance. That's what it costs us to manage that. And you notice that line has just been chugging away in terms of its, and that's driven by, you know, supply shortages after the pandemic, labor cost increases, inflation, just a whole variety of factors. Liability coverage has been a little less on the upward slope, but certainly continues to increase. And so, again, those are our two largest categories, two examples of our largest category of reinsurance. Where we can, we bid those every year to make sure we're getting the absolute best deal, and we're coming to our board with ideas about how to change our retention levels, which affects those premiums directly. But if our retention goes up, that we retain more of that risk before shifting that to reinsurance. It puts more burden on us, and by extension, you and our partnership to make sure that we're keeping claims low, that we're keeping our costs down as much as possible, which just simply means we need to be working on safety and risk management along the way. And again, that's where a lot of our resources are placed. You know, law enforcement liability, other public sector liability, has also been a driver for increases in insurance and reinsurance, and you'll see that again here. And I'll mention law enforcement liability again later in our presentation. We've, it's one of those services you provide. Nobody else can do that. And so, it's a necessary thing that you do and for your offices or officers who are out working with the public in very difficult, sometimes dangerous situations. They really need that, that coverage available to provide them with the support when they have to make those tough decisions. On the bottom of page two, I just want to highlight here, and I'll talk a little bit about rates in a minute, our total insured values continue to climb. These are property, property values. We've got currently a total insured value of $9.2 billion in property, so that includes the building that we're in right here today. It includes all the other property that Stearns County has, as well as your peers across the country. And of course, again, inflation, construction costs, all derived, those are things that you see every day in your work. They're driving those total insured values higher. That's a factor in our property charges to each county. We take our total insured value times our rates, and that's how we come up with the amount of money we charge you for that coverage. And with that, I'm going to jump over to page three, just talk a little bit about rates. I think about rates in terms of what, it's what we charge, rates go into calculations in terms of what we charge our members. We talk about this as contributions. I think you can think of them as premiums in a traditional insurance setting. And our rates are set by our board, and each of those rates gets multiplied or factored by a, what we call an exposure. Property, for example, is our total insured value. So, the total insured value of property in Stearns County as a multiplication factor times the property rate would give you the charge or the contribution that would come to be billed to Stearns County for that. I think, not unlike what each county does in applying levy to property value, it's a way to think about that. And you can see here on the chart on the top of page three, the blue bars are property and liability. Those are annual rates of change. And for a good number of years, those annual rates of change have come down. They've been going up, but at a decreasing level every year. Last year, we increased those rates by about 11%, and that was as a result of some additional claims activity and also just the high level of variability we're seeing in our whole property and casualty area. In a matter of three to four years, we have seen our total costs jump by a factor of three. So, where one year we might pay $7 million, the next year or two years later, we might be paying $19 million. Some of that was enhanced by the pandemic. You know, we did see kind of things slow down for a while. Some of those costs came down, but then there was a restoration of that. But there's a lot of variability, and so we're trying to also factor in the idea that when there is a claim, our members expect us to pay that. And our job is to really make sure that we're giving you the resources to restore your functioning. If you lose a building, you lose a law enforcement vehicle, what have you, that we're not spending our time thinking of ways to hold back in paying those claims, that we're validating those claims, that they're covered by our articulation in terms of our coverage document, and we're making those claim payments as quickly as we reasonably can. Workers' comp is the brown bar, set of bars, and again, you see kind of a similar trend there. And actually, those have been reducing rates over time. In 2025, you see that brown bar is up above the zero line at 4%. And these, again, are the annual rates of change. If I added bars for 2026, the board has just made a decision at their last meeting to hold those rates flat, so the bars for 2026 would both be zero. That's good news. That's a little bit of a relief. But again, total insured value, wages, all of those exposures continue to go up, so you're certainly going to see some increase in your contribution levels as a result of that. I want to highlight this bottom section of page three for just a bit of time. And this shows some of the variability in our claims expenses. If you look at the 2022 line on that chart and compare it to 2023, these are our cybersecurity claims. And in that one-year period, those increased by a factor of greater than 10. And that in and of itself is probably not remarkable, except for the fact that it just shows you how those claims vary from year to year. There's a really high degree of variability. We're trying to manage that variability for our members by making sure that we're sufficiently funded, that we can respond to those challenges over time.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Frisk, escape.
Is that usually just one incident that's, you know, overwhelming?
Don't know, actually.
Or actually, a number of them?
Yeah, actually, if you look on the tan line below, the darker brown line on that chart, in 2023, we had 76 claims. Now, some of those are relatively low dollar, and some of them don't actually end up in what I would call a payment to a bad guy. You know, I think about this, and this is probably an oversimplification, but I think a lot of what we do with cyber is really, these are lawbreakers. These are people that are violating, in our case, are violating the public trust by stealing from us. But those 76 claims contributed to that $1.7 million. I think the largest claim that we had as a part of that $1.7 million is a cyber claim that we had that was among, it impacted about 19 of our member organizations, and it was with one bad actor in Russia, literally. I mean, we're really, we're literally dealing with bad actors outside the United States. But again, it was not, it was about 10% of that total amount of money. So, there's, we're not seeing, you know, these massive, now, as soon as I say that, you know how this goes. But there's 76 claims in '23, 84 in '24, so you can see the number of claims.
Yeah, that's why I was seeing it, looking at the 84, and I just, there was fewer in '23, and all, but it's such a higher spike.
Yeah.
And I was just wondering if it was one or two that were just extremely high.
Yeah. It, there's no, I would say there's no trend there, clean trend that I can point to on that. Let's, let me talk about dividends. The upper right-hand corner of page three just real quickly. It mentions dividends. Last year, we paid a $3.5 million dividend. In 2025, this year, we'll pay a $1.5 million dividend. Those dividend payments have been coming down, but I think for good reason. One of those reasons is the board has done a really good job of trying to focus in on what the right amount of money is that we want to raise from our members from a contribution standpoint. We're not trying to overraise funds. We're also getting a good fix on what our return on investments are in the market. Again, that's governed by Minnesota law. And so, as we fine-tune that contribution rate, necessarily, those dividend payments come down. Again, we never say bargain or budget based on those numbers, because if you do look at that curve, it's been coming down. But it's not coming down because we're in financial stress or trouble. It's really kind of focusing in on what those correct numbers are. So, that's, I think that's good news. On page four, and this is, I'll end my presentation here, just want to talk a little bit about overall claims. That upper right-hand corner, for example, is five years' worth of data, and these are annual averages. So, the numbers in the table are annual averages based on 2020 to 2024 data. You can see, for example, on the top section, there's workers' compensation. Our claims per year for jail and sheriff, that department, relatively high than the number of claims, and you'll see the amount paid per claim there as well. And I think intuitively, that makes sense. As I mentioned earlier, those are individuals that are doing a lot of hard work directly with citizens, sometimes with people who, you know, need to be in jail, obviously. So, very, very difficult circumstances there. If you come down to the bottom part of that and compare, for example, corrections and probation, 42 claims per year on average at $2,000, you get kind of an understanding of some of the variation that we deal with, again, by department for you all, on your behalf. Similarly, with the chart right below that with property liability, again, these are annual averages based on those five years. And you'll see automobiles, for example, we insure 11,000 automobiles across the state. We've got about 1,000 of those claims on autos per year at $49.95. So, relatively high volume, relatively low cost in comparison, let's say, to law enforcement liability, the 70 claims in that area for $41,000. So, it does give you some sense about where the activity is coming from, where the costs are associated, and so, gives you a little bit of insight on our work as well. Lastly, and I'll stop with this and be happy to answer questions you have in this bottom box on the lower section. Again, we're here to be a resource for you. We provide a tremendous amount of training, low cost, sometimes free training. Certainly, you want to use us for that purpose, for you, your staff. We're doing more through webinars. So, prior to pandemic, most of our training was done in person, and so it required people to drive in from all over the state to get that training. Today, we're really focusing on webinars, making it more cost-effective, not requiring people to get out of the office. They can do a one hour, two hours at a time and get the information that they're looking for. So, we're trying to be responsive to the needs of our members as well. The, we have a whole series of initiatives on law enforcement liability. We're focusing there. There's a mention in this bottom section under program and services about benchmark analytics. It's really a program that I really take a lot of pride in, and it's really working with sheriff's offices and jails, particularly across the state, to help them understand what those best practices are, to avoid claims, keep claims down, and learn from mistakes along the way where they have those. As a result of your membership in MCIT, you're automatically members of the Minnesota Safety Council. So, again, large number of resources in that organization for you to be aware of. And I'll just mention again, website, rmcit.org website is just chock full of information for, again, you as commissioners, for your staff. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you today and be happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, first of all, thank you for being in Stearns County. Thank you for your service. You're winding down your service, the MCIT, so good luck with your next chapter.
Thank you.
And thank you for recognizing your best board member. We don't mind sharing him because he has ways, and he's used that effectively. What I'd like to do, and I don't know if it's you or us, I'd like to kind of, like, a couple of years, what our claims have been, what our premiums are, you know, that kind of stuff. So, I don't know which one of you can do that better.
Sure. Yeah, I can take that back.
Just to give a flavor, as I'm still trying to learn things. I'm just curious, on the workers' comp, lot more claims with sheriff jail, which I understand that, and we've talked about that before, but highway, a lot less claims, and yet, the amount per claim was higher. I'm curious why that is.
Yeah, I would guess, and it would be a guess on my part, we can, I can bring back some additional information on that. You know, these are individuals who are probably clearing highways in the winter, again, in semi-dangerous situations, icy roads. So, if they have accidents, if they're involved maybe with other vehicle-related incidents, you might see a little greater average payment per claim. But I can find out more about that.
You don't have to. I was just curious. I mean, if you want to, you can, but don't spend a lot of time on it.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you very much.
So, we certainly are beyond our 10/20 posting for the public hearing. Ben Anderson would be our next item up for the parks and our public hearing on the park ordinance. Welcome, Ben.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Ben Anderson, Stearns County Parks Director. With me this morning, I have Tom Poser, our natural resource technician, who did most of the work on updating the language within the ordinance that we are looking at this morning. So, the agenda item that we have for your consideration is an agenda item, and one can be found on packet pages. can be found on packet pages one eighteen through one thirty six, and it's to conduct a public hearing to consider amendments to Stearns County Parks Ordinance Number five ninety three. Uh, so I think if it's okay, Mr. Chair, we'll start with a, kind of a brief overview of the amendments that were made, um, and then we can move into the public hearing portion.
Okay.
All right, so the major, um, there's a couple of different things we were trying to do with this ordinance. They were, uh, first, those housekeeping items, just to clear up some of the language and make them consistent with other county ordinances. And then really, the main purpose of this, uh, update is to put rules and regulations around the hunting activity at Chain of Lakes County Park. So as you may recall, in two thousand twenty two, the county took on a new venture, uh, a two hundred and fifty acre parcel located just south of the city of Cold Spring, uh, with the caveat that we have to allow hunting on it due to one of the major funding sources, the Lassarde Sam's Outdoor Heritage Funding. And we worked in close collaboration with Pheasants Forever to make that a reality and eventually got that property into county ownership. So again, today, that's the main purpose of the ordinance update, is to put the rules and regulations, um, around that activity, uh, which is new for the county. In your packet, you'll see a summary in the background. I think all of you attended both of the, the public input meetings that we had regarding the property and the proposed rules and regulations. And then the park commission considered, uh, those at their, uh, one of their previous meetings here, and they did not make any changes based off of that public input or recommendations to the board for changes. Uh, so you are seeing the ordinance as it was proposed and those rules as they were proposed at that public input meeting. This was advertised through the Cold Spring Record, and as of this morning, about ten minutes ago, we have received no additional public comment other than what was included in your packet, and that was the information from that previous public input meeting in Wakefield Township. So with that, I'll, uh, turn it over to Mr. Poser to provide some brief updates on those amendments.
Hello, Commissioners. We'll start with some general updates to the ordinance. A few grammatical revisions were reflected in the ordinance. I won't go over all of those, but we did add the addition of ATV, UTV under the definition of a vehicle, uh, just to provide some clarity within our ordinance on enforcement there. Updated some section numbers to reflect the addition of Chain of Lakes County Park, uh, and that displacing some of the other ordinances, as well as the addition of seventeen point four to address cannabis use being unlawful in Stearns County Parks. And that language largely mimics the county ordinance as well. So we took some of that language and, uh, plugged it into the Parks Ordinance. Specifically with Chain of Lakes County Park, I will go over three of the, more of the, uh, the major highlights with the ordinance revisions, and, uh, we can take some questions if there are any and comment from there. In addition to, uh, compliance with all state and federal laws, it's important to note that any individuals hunting at Chain of Lakes will be required to have a Stearns County Parks hunting permit. Uh, so what that will look like, they will have the opportunity to register, uh, with a paper copy at the park or also online prior to hunting. Uh, what that document will have is a map showing, uh, restricted areas, park boundaries, rules and regulations. Uh, that permit will also be revisited annually by park staff to ensure compliance with all, uh, all applicable state game laws as well as county ordinance. So it's going to be more of a, a opportunity to have a living document that we can revisit to ensure, um, it's the best suited, um, permit for this property. Uh, as far as firearms and archery use on the park property, only fine shot shotgun will be allowed for use at hunting at the park. Possession and discharge of any rifle, air rifle, slug shotgun, handgun, muzzleloader, BB gun or paintball guns is not allowed, and that's largely mimicking our, um, current ordinance within the park system as well. Um, but with the exception that fine shot shotgun and archery hunting will be allowed within the park. Uh, the firearm, uh, restrictions will have, uh, some stipulations with it, with the two hundred and fifty foot firearm buffer from dwellings. Uh, as the ordinance reads, it's written restricting firearm discharge as it's, uh, designated, uh, through signage at the park and through documents that individuals will have access to. So the ordinance doesn't necessarily call out that two hundred and fifty feet, but it does specifically say it's as signed and as designated. So that will provide us an opportunity a, as well to have that be more of a fluid, uh, document there and make any changes in the future if needed. Uh, in addition to the, uh, discharge, uh, within two hundred and fifty feet from a dwelling, there is a culturally significant site at Chain of Lakes County Park as well, and that will be restricted by state law, that there will be no firearm discharge allowed in that area. Any areas that are designated no firearm discharge will also be signed as such, uh, with high visibility reflective signage, uh, and, um, that will be placed out, uh, once the ordinance is in place. Um, as far as the archery use within the park, archery hunting will be allowed throughout the whole park at this point, is the proposal. And that is all I have for general updates on it.
Okay. Should we ask our questions first and then open a public hearing or do the public hearing first? I don't think anybody's going to be here for the public hearing. Why don't we open the public hearing, uh, on this ordinance change? If there's anybody here from the public that would like to, um, share any comments? We do have some people here that are interested, but I don't think they're going to say anything.
Uh, Mr. Chair, there has been an update. John Miley would like to just say a few words.
Got it. Welcome, John. John's our new director for the soil and water, um, conservation. It's a different name now, John, tell us.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and staff. Uh, yeah, I just want to clarify a little bit on that. Yes, I'm the new director and administrator of the Stearns Conservation District, replacing Dennis Fuchs, but I want to, you know, definitely be here speaking to the topic of the Chain of Lakes Park, which I have been a part in since this vision started. At that time, I was working for the Minnesota DNR, uh, running the wetlands program, but I was a partner in the scale that I was part of the Sock River Partnership, where we acquired these funds through the Outdoor Heritage Fund to acquire this park, where Pheasants River had that portion of the pot. So I understood the detail of this, and I just want to commend Ben and his staff for all the work that they've done to find a way to make this happen. Um, this is a great story to tell to the Outdoor Heritage Council, that the county board, the Parks Division, Stearns County Proactive, and the neighbors surrounding it found a way to find common values to make it work so everybody can recreate in the terms that the funds were made to be used for. They had to be allowed open for hunting, they had to protect groundwater, they had to protect lakeshore, had to protect wetlands and give wildlife habitat. So what's being presented today is an excellent example of the intent of those funds. So I just wanted to applaud that and, and my background in the community support has been very strong and positive for this project. Thank you.
We'll, um, have you before the board at some point, uh, just to give a, a more formal introduction, uh, with your new position and, uh, welcome to, to that position, so.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Persky.
I just want to, John, I just want to comment, thank you on your work for putting this together. Uh, you know, when we saw the availability for this property and see, saw what the park commission, uh, did, what Ben, uh, uh, Tom, you know, what you, you folks were able to achieve is, it's incredible, because it's a tremendous asset that's, that's going to be there. And then offering the ability to have some hunting under certain restriction also is a plus for a lot of folks, so wow.
Thank you, it's been, it was a long process. Yep, thank you, it was a long process, and we made it work, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here from the public, um, to, um, share any thoughts? Seeing none, um, we'll close the public hearing. I don't have to do the three-member call thing, do I? I won't. Um, now, now we can have discussions amongst the board. Uh, two questions or a couple of questions I had is, um, the paper at the park permit, I think I heard you say, Tom.
Correct.
Uh, so what, is it going to be like a box or how, how does that work?
Yes, it would be staged at the entrances of the park, uh, likely directly below the park sign, the main entrance signs that will be placed at the, the point of access. And, uh, will be designated permits, uh, stated on that box. And I do have a copy of one with me today of that draft, uh, that we would be putting in there. Uh, staff would have to monitor that to start with to see what that usage looks like, but we would likely be out there with a pretty heavy presence, uh, in the first few months of the hunting season.
So a person would come, fill out the permit and then automatically be able to hunt?
That, that is correct.
And then, of course, if they'd be hunting and you'd approach them, they'd say, well, I filled out a permit at the box or, and there's no cost to the permit?
They are, uh, yes, they are free, there is no cost.
It's just, uh, Commissioner Bertram, uh, members, it's just another extra level of protection here in the county to, so people to recognize, you know, the significance of this property, because we do know that there is residential areas, you know, along the eastern boundary and things like that. Putting that permit process into ordinance does also allow our, our Parks and Recreational Deputy, who's in the audience today, to, and all of the other sheriff's deputies as well, to help enforce that, to make sure people are just taking that extra step of precaution, so.
It was good that you had him at the public hearing, because everybody could see, if you see him, you got a problem if you're there early. You know who to watch out for.
Right.
Commissioner Notch.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. So is that a duplicate copy? So if they don't have to go back to the box, they will look for it, they actually have a copy with them?
Yes, so it'd be, uh, correct, uh, be required to be on their person.
Okay, thanks.
And the setback, obviously, had a lot of discussion, uh, on, you know, whether it'd be two fifty, five hundred, and, um, you mentioned it during your, uh, presentation, Tom, that, um, you know, we'll start with this and we'll see if there's problems or whatever, we'll evolve into something differently if we need to, but there was a lot of concern about that and legitimately so. So, um, uh, I guess that's, Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, I was gonna say, along those lines, we know we've had some challenges in some other areas near us, so both having the extra permit, no, that's a little bit more work for people, but they're not going to have to spend anything more than they do on getting their hunting license, and the buffer hopefully will be sufficient, and if it isn't, I'm sure you're going to be bringing it back to us to revisit, because nobody living nearby wants to be at risk.
Yes.
And, and yet, we're also, I think we're all excited about this. This is going to be a great opportunity for people regionally.
The, you and I talked a little bit about the no hunting versus no firearms. Just explain that, uh, the part about why, why you're saying no firearms versus no hunting.
Right, so the intent of the, the property is to have it open for public hunting. Um, but recognizing with the residential development, uh, on the eastern boundary there, we heard from residents that live along, along the boundary that both wanted to have restriction for hunting directly adjacent and those who didn't, who wanted to be able to walk out their back door. So really, the two hundred and fifty foot is a compromise that we feel and the park commission felt was appropriate to at least give it a try in the front end and along with the no firearm zone as well. State statute does not require us to have any sort of buffer, uh, and technically on publicly owned property, people can, could fire a firearm on publicly owned property right up to that boundary line. Um, so again, this is our, our way to try, and we've, we've heard from those who don't want to see it directly adjacent to the property, we see those who do want to be able to walk out the door and hunt it, and we feel like this is the best compromise in restricting the, the firearm portion in those certain small areas, as you see on page one, thirty six of your packet.
Jim Truman, uh, came in a little late. Jim, did you want to share something? I closed the public hearing, but if you did, I'll reopen the public hearing. Uh, if you do want to say something, we closed the public hearing already, but if you did want to say something, you're a direct landowner, I'd open it back up again, the public hearing. Do you want to share something with us? Okay, thank you for coming. Commissioner Notch?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so, um, then, Tom, is, will, will the, the trail be closed during hunting season or basically it's up to the hunter to make sure they're not shooting where they shouldn't be?
Um, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, uh, to answer that, the trails would be left open, uh, and primarily as hunting access trails, uh, and we will look at, uh, additional verbiage at the entrances, uh, just caution when walking out there, hikers throughout the course of the, the hunting season as well. And inherently, uh, hunters are going to be pretty aware of where those trails are. They've used them to access where they are hunting, uh, and it's typically going to be in the back of their mind. Um, in addition to that, we are working with the county GIS team to, um, have some geo-referenced maps that people can also have on their cell phone that will show, uh, the layout of the park, uh, which would include the trails as well as the no firearm buffers, uh, that they could reference directly in the field where they are at, uh, within the park boundary.
Nice.
It's a good question, even the state trails, Glacial Lakes Trail and all the trails, uh, people, I mean, there are some people that will not bike or walk during the hunting season because they're, and a lot of people wear the bright orange, which always is a smart idea. If you're biking or walking, wear something bright orange that, uh, over anxious hunter doesn't mistake you for something else. Anything else from anybody? Uh, you are, um, uh, in Jim's case, you know, you, you do allow wheelchair access, again, by permit, and Jim understands that process, but handicapped accessibility, all that stuff. Ben, I don't know who all went on that, but, uh, Ben, you and I went through the whole park. It is something to see this park is certainly something, and the next park that we're going to start developing, the, the last two parks that we've, in, created, uh, certainly have been great opportunities with financial assistance and, uh, access to the public. So certainly, this is, this is good. Any, Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, you know, and in some ways, you know, this is not all that different than wildlife management areas and hunters coming in on a wildlife management area, uh, and as far as buffering, uh, other private properties. So the property owners have the right to put a fence on their property, they have, have the right to put as much signage as they want on their property as well. So, uh, as far as warning, uh, about being close to other buildings and homes, I think that maybe is not such, uh, a, a great issue. Uh, and, and then just the, the ethics of hunting, I think, uh, we're, we're taking a look to, of, of the odd cases of people that are going to violate the conduct of, of hunting. There's a lot of good, quality, ethical hunters that are out there, and they know, you know, to be mindful of the weapon that they have and also the way they treat game. And you don't just shoot at an animal, you should, if you're going to be shooting at an animal, you're shooting it to kill it, uh, rather than just shooting at a bunch of brush or, or a silhouette or something like that. So I'm, again, I'm very excited about what's going to take place, so let's, let's have at it and good luck this hunting season.
There's one hunter I'm a little concerned about, so, um, I'm not going to name names, but he's to the left of me someplace. He might be a little over anxious.
Mr. Chair, I believe it's a bow hunter.
Anything else? Otherwise, a motion would be in order to, um, uh, enact ordinance number six ninety six, is that right?
Correct.
So a motion would be in order?
I'll move that.
Okay, Commissioner Persky moves it.
Second.
Commissioner Clark seconds it. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O's, same sign. Ordinance is enacted. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, oh, by the way, Ben, uh, thank the park commission. Uh, as you said, we attended, all of us attended the public hearings, the park commission meetings, uh, they did a very, a lot of heavy lifting, did a good job of getting it to where it is today and so, yep.
Well done, thank you.
Commend that, uh, them for. Uh, next item is the two thousand twenty six discussion on preliminary budget and tax levy. Mike's going to start that off.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to bring you an update on where we are with the two thousand and twenty six You've been reminded of the process here a number of times, and we are, I guess we're down on the second row of that graphic there, uh, mid-August to September, where we all, we as staff have pulled this budget together and, uh, bring it to you for your input and eventual, uh, approval of the preliminary levy at the last meeting in September. And then you have time from then, then until the end of the year to actually adopt, uh, the final budget for two thousand and twenty six. As you know, the levy that you adopt at, at the end of September cannot be increased but could be decreased. You also know that we do all of this with our mission and values in mind, so let's talk a little bit about how we developed, um, this, some of the things that we think about as we're pulling this together. And of course, first and foremost, we want something that's acceptable to you, uh, in the end, and we want to keep the tax rate as low as possible. And connected with that, and sometimes those, these two are a little difficult to bring together, we want this to be sustainable for the future as well. Um, you'll see that we're using a little bit of, um, fund balance this year, but, uh, and that's really. really out of the project fund, so we don't kind of consider that as use of fund balance, because that's what we established the project fund for. As you know, we also review a number of fees, and this year, had a major look at a lot of our fees, because those are the environmental services fees, and you'll see, we, we have a number in this budget to, to increase those revenues, and of course, we have capital projects, particularly Justice Center coming ahead, we wanna keep our AA plus bond rating, especially as we are about to incur a major amount of debt, sales tax debt. Also, that we have bargaining agreements in place that, of course, we need to fund too, then we talked earlier about the Paid Family Medical Leave Act as something new. In, as far as infrastructure, you see in this budget, we have another, I would say, very high year of road construction, it's like $31 million. Again, we have the sales of the Justice Center project looming and being planned, and then, as we just discussed today, we have new parks, we have, of course, Chain Lakes Park, we just talked about, we have a project ongoing in Kramer Lake Park, and then, a meeting ago or two, you approved moving ahead with a master plan for Quarry Park. And then, the broadband program, we continue to fund that with state and federal dollars, as you know, and I'm, I'll provide a report for you here in the, in the near future, perhaps at our meeting in, in Cold Spring, on how we're, how the whole project is coming along, because we are nearing the end of, of getting almost the entire county fixed with fiber. To continue how we were looking at this, of course, we have to adequately fund our state and federally mandated programs, and we've talked, again, at length, previous meetings, about our large amount of public assistance, and you heard more, well, we heard more about the use of EVA this morning at our, at our coordinating committee meeting too. You'll see and hear that we're trying to find a way to invest in public safety with at least a couple of deputies, you know, we, the sheriff requested even more than that, but I think there's good reason why we need to find a way to add patrol staff to, to the sheriff's department. We have a grant increase in fraud prevention, and we're trying to figure out exactly how we might deal with that, and make use of that, of those funds, and then you'll also see that we have a number of staff that are gonna be pretty much full-time on the Jail Justice Center project, and we funded them with sales tax, and we'll talk about that in a minute as well, actually, it's about $700,000 that we have, funding a number of staff that will be pretty much 100% dedicated to the Jail Justice Center. And another reminder here of what we were trying to do, and we'll talk about it, with the sheriff's office, as you recall, we had a, we had a plan to use the public safety dollars that were awarded to the county last year to increase dispatch center staff, and we're currently talking about how we might use some of those funds that haven't been used, because we can't, we haven't been able to hire all of those dispatchers, we still wanna continue with that plan, of course. And then, of course, we work with AMC, so we're, in the last year, less harmed by what's been proposed by the state, I would say it. So, where are we with numbers right now? This is just overall, you know, if you take a look at our overall budget, we, we show that we had a very minor increase, but really, factoring out highway construction, because as you recall, we had nine or 10 million dollars last year, that was really a pass, pass-through, so we're looking at expenditures of about 7% increase over last year, and how that impacts the levy, and you can, you know, go right down to the bottom here, and we are at a 5.6% increase in the levy today, and that's a little less than we were at last time, I think we were at 5.8, I wanna say, last two, a couple of weeks ago, or 5, 5.8, so there's a couple of changes, and I'll note those for you here in a minute. This is just another way, another way here to, to look at the, at the budget, you can see, bulk of our expenditures are in the human services area at 35%, and if you, if you add in highway construction, the highway department is 22%, and then if you look at the general fund or revenue fund, that's at 41%, which the bulk of that is really public safety, and then a couple of other, other smaller funds there too, so you can see, human services, highway, general fund, public safety are really the lion's share of where we are spending our dollars. This is a different way to look at it, to compare kind of where we were capital, and we'll talk about, a little bit about that, we're a little more on capital, but the big number there, of course, is personnel, which is a huge part of the budget, if you factor out, you know, road construction, you're gonna see that this is even, I think I say in the, in the executive summary, that personnel is 65%, if you factor out that big number of road construction, it's even more than that. So, we try to highlight for you some of the major changes, and you can see here that personnel, with the, with the bargaining agreements, the changes in, so in changes in salaries and changes in health insurance, we have more than $8 million impact on the budget, and the, the next line item, the 1.1 is a change really from the very first budget that you saw, so we, we, as, as wages and salaries increase, we can increase the amount of dollars that are saved when we have vacancies, so we adjust this number a little bit from year to year. There's some new personnel in the budget today, some of those are funded with other funds, or maybe one-time funds that eventually will fall onto the levy, but as this budget is presented today, the levy impact of those new personnel is 142,000. You talked at length at your work session last meeting about the increase in environmental services fees, and you'll hold that public hearing at your next meeting, we have $225,000 built into this budget, because if, if those fees are, are approved. A little bit of an increase in capital items, next year is an election year, that's roughly a half a million dollar increase. Mr. Chair, you asked earlier, the, what the Paid Family Medical Leave Act is, that's the number here, $400,000, it's actually $800,000, but half of that will be paid by employees, half will be paid by, half will be paid by the employer, so I'm surprised that number wasn't in the information this morning, I'm sorry about that, but here it is in front of you. We have lost in county program aid, a little bit of an increase in state aid, since the first budget, we did up the, the investment earnings, and then here's a, the next, the last there is a, is a change we made since the last meeting, if you remember when we've, last year, we budgeted, we had $1.7 million budgeted, which used to be the debt levy, well, as you know, we don't have any debt, but we kept that levy up, we have reduced it a little bit in the last few years, and so this year, we, again, the last time you saw this budget, it was $1.2 million was in the levy, and so what you're seeing in this levy is we, we, we reduced that to zero, and we increased the contingency in the general fund to a million dollars, and so that was a net reduction of $200,000 in the levy, but it sets aside that million dollars for kind of, for the unknowns that were, that are looming in human services particularly, so we, we thought it made sense to preserve that amount of the levy, and set it aside in case we need it next year, and of course, then that, that levy will be there as we budget for 2027 as well. So, those are trying to point out some of the, some of the major things that are impacting the budget, these are the additional people that are in this budget. Again, we have a six and a half people, and one of those, the half is the fraud investigator, which we haven't quite recommended to you exactly what we wanna do with that yet, but we have $60,000 additional in that grant, which would pay for roughly a half a person, we have two people in here, two patrol deputies, we're still talking about using public safety aid for that, this budget has half of that, $224,000 in public safety aid and half on the levy, and then we have someone in the procurement department, which will really be devoted much to the, to the Jail Justice Center, and then the other, the other, the sanitarium, the household hazardous waste, of course, are paid with, well, sanitarium would be paid for with the additional fees in environmental services, and then the household hazardous waste is paid for with environmental service fee. The maintenance worker in the parks, we were suggesting that the railroad authority could pay for, it doesn't, it wouldn't necessarily have to be maintenance, it could be, Ben spends a lot, and his staff spends a lot of time administering that program, Chad spends a lot of time, Martini spends a lot of time, so somehow, we're thinking that might make sense, but I'm also, after reviewing some of the enabling documents for the railroad authority, I'm somewhat wondering if we can actually do that, so it really would only be a way, a different way to account for the funds, I mean, it would be levied by the railroad authority, transferred to the county, but as you all know, the railroad authority levy is a countywide levy, so it would, it would have, it would, maybe a better way to account for it, but really, little impact in the end on whoever's paying, those that are paying the property taxes.
Commissioner Persky?
Yeah.
Mike, see, I got a question on that operation supervisor for household hazardous waste, the job description on that, that's not just an administrative position, is it?
Not totally, no, it would be a...
My concern would be that, you know, in the past, we, that's been the administration part of household hazardous waste that's been taken care of by somebody else, and that, you know, that, that this, all of a sudden, we're creating a full-time position for somebody to be administrative, where the hours are very minimal, considering what the administration would be there, that it, that it actually would be more, is it an operational, in that they'll be working there as well? And, and so, what I would, rather than make it 40 hours a week, do we make it a split, where it's therefore, perhaps 20 hours of administration and 20 hours working, I, I'm just concerned about having an administrator that is in that position, but there's not 40 hours worth of work there.
Yeah, Commissioner Persky, I, I, we can talk more about that if we had some of the environmental services staff in the room, but I, I would liken this to more like a lead worker than actually...
That's what I...
Than an administrative level person.
Okay, just could get some clarification on that, absolutely, it just makes sense, yeah, and, and having somebody hands-on administratively oftentimes is quite, quite good too, as well, so, yeah, I agree.
What did you call it?
A lead worker.
Oh, lead worker, 'cause I had questions, I was gonna wait, but as long as you brought that up, for the, what's the sanitarium, what is that?
That, that's the position we talked about at our last work session, that does the inspections, food, food and beverage inspections, an additional person in that area.
And, you know, again, if, my gut reaction is, if we're gonna add people, let's add it to the sheriff's office, the HHW, didn't we add staff when we extended the hours?
We did.
We did that, right?
Yes, and that's, that's part of the reason for this request, is we have more staff to be supervised there, and, but, also to have someone working there as well.
I mean, you're, you're looking for input.
Yep.
That's not where, I would personally add resources, we've got staff, we've added staff, people can rise to the top and kind of figure out who amongst the existing group can do that, in my opinion, I don't know that that's where we should be adding staff, and then the sanitarium, if the fees are gonna cover it, I guess, again, I'm not sure what's changed, we didn't add a lot of businesses that need to be inspected, in fact, if anything, several have closed, so I'm not sure what the justification is there, and I don't know, you maybe can get some additional information, 'cause again, several restaurants have closed in the last two, three months, that they won't need to visit, so maybe find that out, but the staff for the HHW for a management, I guess that's one of the questions I wrote down, too, and then the fraud investigator, right now, we have, what do we have, one? Full-time?
Yes.
And this is what, an, an additional .5?
That's what we have here, yeah.
So, it would be one and a half?
Yes.
Got it, 'cause that's been very productive, from what I've...
We're, and we're, in fact, we're talking about it with, with the sheriff's office tomorrow, of how we might want to put all this together, for now, we have this place marker in there as a, as a halftime person.
And when you do that, I always wonder, is it the top half, or is it the bottom half, which half of the person? We haven't said something, I, I haven't said something stupid for a while, so I thought I would, Commissioner Clark?
Oh, you were just being funny.
I was trying to be a...
In your mind, yes.
Thank you, Mr., yeah. My understanding is part of, and I, I'm guessing we could get an email to help us understand maybe what each of these positions would be doing, because obviously, we're concerned about the levy increases, and it's just helpful in terms of us answering, but my understanding is that Mark's job has gotten to be too big to really be running also the household here hazardous waste, and we've expanded hours, among other things, and we're talking about EWA, and we're talking about some other things, so it would mean that we would have some changes in that, and I know while we don't get into particularly that level of detail, it helps all of us, as we're talking about adding positions on, from fees, to know what that is, so I have to admit, given all of that, that might be a good investment, and it cannot be used for the sheriff's department anyways, so we should know that, and then I'm, I am interested, I was wondering, and I'm sorry, when I was talking to you, I didn't get a chance to ask you about whether or not, what, how we would handle that under regional rail, clearly, we're doing an awful lot of work together there, so that might, if, if that's permitted, it, it would certainly make some sense, given all the trails, but I guess we need to figure out if we can, can do it there or not.
Like, can point you to, yeah, and they'll, we'll bring back more information on that.
Yeah, and, and, I had one other thing, I mean, I know...
Commissioner Clark?
That in, you know, it ebbs and flows, and often, really, where fraud has been, just for the public, isn't really on the people who might make mistakes, who are trying to act sex services, or the few who maybe are a bad actor, it has actually been on provider, or very occasionally, it was a long time ago, but we actually had a staff person, where it was like $400,000. I think we have good safeguards in place now, and part of this is a prevention, as well as making sure that we're, it was a long time ago, like before, maybe all of us were on the board, I believe Lee was on the board still then, but, you know, let's make sure that we're together with human services, with the sheriff's department, it, it helps us do the due diligence, so that we're not seeing any of the fiascos like what the state did, I mean, I think that's part of all of our concern.
And the fraud, it, it's been successful, from what I've seen, and what we do is some of it, and it, it really does get into a philosophical kind of perspective, someone says they have four children, and they have two, that's not a mistake.
Oh, absolutely.
That's not a oopsie, so I think the more we crack down on that, one, we're doing it ourselves within Stearns County, two, by cracking down on that, we show the integrity of the program, word gets out real fast, if they think someone's not watching, you're gonna see more people do that, if we do watch, very few criminal convictions have occurred, you know, a lot of this is just simply catching it, correcting it, and then moving on, and of course, the word gets out, don't try that, it's not gonna work, you know, or whatever, so that's where I think it's been successful, and we wanna build on that.
And, and, Mr. Chair, monetarily, not necessarily, but yes, we want people to fill things out correctly, some of that does end up getting inadvertent, some of it isn't, and we wanna make sure, but again, for the public, we, I think as a state, and even locally, where you've seen some issues, you know, have been more on a provider side, and at times, it could be because somebody can get us a service somewhere, so it's just, just for us to remember, this is broad, it's also in the bigger scheme of life, not that much money, and we're, you know, I, I really do applaud the sheriff's department in conjunction with human services for the work they're doing.
Mr. Chair?
And I don't know how, you know, I, I always look at Mike, and I think, how do you devise like a direction from the board, I mean, there's a couple of things that were shared now between hazardous waste and what Cheryl said, I have faith in Mark, you know, good people rise to the occasion, and I have faith in Mark that he will be able to figure out, we did hire additional staff, that he can delegate more to that additional staff, it, you know, 117,000 here and 108,000 there, you're going in the right direction by getting it down to 5.6, someone told me it should be zero, well, I said, lots of luck with that, and of course, then, you know, the person went on to tell me how he did it, and God bless, that's not government, I mean, we have union contracts, get million-dollar cutbacks, and so, but, so... I mean, we have union contracts, get million-dollar cutbacks, and so, but, so I, I get that, but you're going in the right direction. But if we can funnel this, again, if we can get another deputy, if we can get a fraud investigator, but I wanna, I, I don't know how you wanna get a consensus for that, but I, I wanted, that's my priority. We have to remember the basics versus the niceties. I mean, I'd love to have a full-time secretary. I'd love to have a office that I could come into. Well, I don't, I really don't want an office, and I don't want a secretary. I have one, you know, I, I, I'm my own secretary. But the point is, we all want a lot of things. And one of the things that I was gonna ask, and now that we're getting into this, I did ask, you know, the cuts and the increases, you know, what, what have we cut? Kind of a side-by-side comparison, what have we cut, what have we increased, you know, to build on this a little bit? And then are there any staff cuts proposed? Are we cutting staff?
You, you don't see any staff cuts in, necessarily in this proposed budget? We are talking about that in a couple of, they're small, but a couple of areas.
And again, nobody likes to do that, but these are challenging times, they all are challenging times. What is this, how many budgets have you done, Mike? Ten?
In, in the county, yes, about ten, I would say. You don't wanna know how many I've done.
No, no. Don't start acting like cities. We, we want you to keep acting like a county administrator. But, so again, these are challenging, yes, but again, a hundred thousand here, a hundred thousand there, add up quickly, and it does kind of set the prioritization of the county and the board of where we wanna spend those resources. So again, how we can help you get there, you have to figure that out, or you have to let us know that.
Yeah.
Because obviously, again, there's different thoughts on that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the feedback, of course, is important, and this is still work in progress. Of course, in the end, if there's some change that is, that the board really wants to indicate, then emotion and formal action is what it would take in the end, of course. I mean, you could do that. You don't have to take action on the entire budget only, you could give direction to do something more specific than that too, but...
And Commissioner Clark is right, we don't like to micromanage, and yet, this is getting into the weeds a little bit, and we need to help you get into the weeds a little bit.
The reason I'm highlighting, what I'm highlighting is it's areas of new initiatives, you know, it's, it's just as you say, it's a hundred here, a hundred there, and it all adds up. So that's why we're presenting you a certain level of detail here.
Did you have any, Commissioner Persky?
With that procurement specialist, Mike, we had a call in, in on CASM, somebody maybe being critical of that, of that position necessarily. But also, what I'm hoping, and, and perhaps the public doesn't know, or the impact of the, the new facility, and when we're investing over three hundred million dollars, and what that can also mean to the local economy. And if, that person might also have the ability at which to find contractors, or builders, whatever, that might actually help us locally and still get a very good price on things, and making sure that we're doing that. And, and by all means, that helps the, the local economy as well. So I'm, I'm hoping that, that will be a part of it as well. Not only the good price, but also a local price, if we can get that for people there.
That project is not going to bid, go bid to a general contractor, there's gonna be many smaller contracts that make up that entirety.
Yeah.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Persky, I really appreciated the comments you made on that yesterday, because it is, it's gonna be a lot of things, I think. I know you've got a bit more to get through on this, but because we're talking about some of those bigger themes right now, I think we can anticipate, and I know you all are, the budget committees looking at it, I know departments are. One is at the moment, aside from that million dollars, money isn't being put aside for some of what we know is likely to happen in the next two, three, four years on the broader human service mandate, and, you know, that's in part because it's not here yet, and we're not exactly sure what it's gonna mean. Same too, it won't be for a few years, that we're gonna need to be re-looking at what staff has also needed for the sheriff with regard to the new justice center. And in both cases, that eye towards how are we being efficient, what can we do to be more effective? And the technology, you brought up Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee, some technology pieces were being talked about, including actually deputies being able to look up license plates with, or the records, buy a license plate without needing to go through dispatch, each other being able to see where each other are. So, you know, as, as we're doing that eye towards the future with some significant potential costs, particularly on the mandated human service side, but also as we're looking for the future on our public safety broader than maybe just one department, you know, helping us understand the public, understanding where those efficiencies, and maybe some of the, the investments we're making, but how that's, that's playing, paying back off. So Tyler Technologies, some of the work that's happening with the sheriff's department, should be helping with some of the, the personnel, or at least alleviating some of those added stressors on, on the deputies, which is good. And, and dispatch.
And again, a million-dollar cut from the federal level, state level, four hundred thousand dollars, now we have the number for family leave. We're getting hit with this stuff, we have no, we can't do anything about it.
Right, and Mr. Chair, I guess I didn't wanna bring up the really big numbers, it's probably more like four, five, six, seven, eight million dollars that's gonna hit us in the future. And we've got people working together internally and with the community to try to figure out how we bring down some of those, you know, our part of it, so that the services that are needed are able to, to go where they're needed, and our staff who is really working so hard has the tools to help bring down some of the stress as well. And I, I know we're not disagreeing, I just wanna point out for the public that what we're talking about right now is just, perhaps the tip of what we're gonna see in the next few years.
And I hope we're gonna continue to lobby federally and state.
Absolutely.
Cut the funding, but cut the mandate. I mean, if you're gonna cut the funding, cut the mandate, because then we're gonna decide here at this level, do we wanna do that program? And then we'll make those decisions, and then if a majority of the board says yes, we will do the program, well, then I guess we'll do the program, and we're gonna pay for the program.
And if they're not gonna change it, then we're stuck, and that's why we're trying to lobby for it, right?
So let's continue to lobby for that.
Absolutely.
So, sorry for the interruption, but...
That's why we're here.
But again, keep in mind that we do have opinions on some of this that we'll still have to work through yet. So, okay?
Some smaller numbers here, outside agencies, but sometimes these are, raise a little attention, but the first six lines there have no change, even though there may have been a request for more. The Ag Society or the, the Fair, the Fair, we upped that to thirty thousand dollars, was that, I think, last year when we increased that by ten thousand dollars. The Historical Society, the Soil and Water, made larger requests, this budget holds them to a three percent increase. There were two new requests, the Humane Society and Career Solutions, and we have not recommended funding those new requests this year.
And I think with Career Solutions, we have to explain why, or it might be helpful for the board, Joe and I sit on that joint powers board, why they ask for it. Benton has preliminarily approved two thousand dollars, but why they ask for it and what the justification is, you know, and why we feel there is, and I mean, we should come up with, and you probably have already, I, I'm, it's a new, new deal, because of some strange things. And darn near got approved months ago, until I shared it with you and Randy and said, is this something we do? You know, it was kinda like it was on a fast track of getting approved at the joint powers board before we even talked about it, so...
Yeah, Randy can, can help explain it too, but we, we, we used to do the payroll and more for...
Payroll.
Payroll and some HR services.
Yep.
For Career Solutions, and that had a certain cost to it, and so Benton County, I think at the time...
We weren't charging the full cost.
There you go. And so Benton contributed to try to make up for some of that.
Yep.
Since then, a couple of years ago, we backed out of doing those payroll and HR services for any other entities, and I think since then also, Career Solutions has been losing some federal revenue too. And so the request was to try to help that budget, and I don't know, I, I guess it's been our opinion, and I don't know that we should be funding that joint powers agreement anymore than we did in the past.
And what happened was the payroll, when we switched to our system, we said, well, we can do your payroll, but this is what the fee's gonna be. And then, of course, some people blew a gasket on that.
Yeah.
And I told Benton County, well, if it really offends you, you can do it. And of course, that got shut down pretty fast, so, and, and again, this is my irritation with joint powers boards, we always seem to get caught holding a bag, and well, you guys are bigger, you do the payroll, you be the fiscal agent, you do this. And so, yeah, that, that, that's what kinda started this all, is when, when you did your new payroll system, and we said, okay, we can do the payroll, but this is what it's gonna cost you.
Right, so a previous payroll vendor, we were within a range, so there was no added cost to have them for us to do that, right? There's certainly staff time that we were charging, and not the full amount, and that's what Benton County was picking up that difference. So we went to Workday, then they charge per employee, and so we reflected that cost in the proposal, and it was, it was high, right? So then they found their own payroll provider, so...
And we helped them find, you know, we gave them options, and they found, so, and it's a win-win.
Yeah.
We don't have to incur huge costs, they found a very reasonable solution to doing their payroll.
Yep.
But you might wanna just a couple of sentences, at least for Joe and I, to report back to Career Solutions, why that's not in the budget, would be helpful. Make Joe look good.
We have to do. We've, we've talked about the...
Nobody said anything, he's like, oh, God, that's too big of a reach.
This is fund balances, just to, just to remind you, I mean, I think we're in a good shape with fund balances. And particularly attention to the project fund there, twenty-one million, it's considerably higher than it was previously. Recall that the board approved putting some fund balance from some of the other funds above there into the, into the project fund. Last year, I believe that was?
Yeah, earlier this year, yep.
This is just to show you from two thousand and eighteen to today what the levy changes have been, and I think that, you know, those are, in comparison to other counties, I think, arguably considerably less. You can see some pretty lean, some pretty small changes there in nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. And if you look at those increases as they impact the county tax rate, you asked me how many budgets I've done, Commissioner Bertram, that two thousand and seventeen would have been the first one I was involved in. So since that time, and I think, I, I can't speak to before, but we've been dropping the county tax rate significantly, which really means we've been keeping that increase in the levy below the, the increase in property values or, or the tax base. So you can see the last two years, it's been pretty much constant, and this year, with this budget, it would actually, the tax rate would go down just a tiny little bit, like point one eight percent, something like that. So it's essentially keeping the tax rate the same.
And what complicates this is, you know, property taxes, you've got school districts, city, and our townships, and us, and so, and you've got valuation. When valuations go up, your taxes are gonna go up, not best, basically because of the budget directly, but because your valuation went up. And so you turn that all into the mix, and we're all the same, when we sit down to write our checkout, I forget his name now, the auditor treasurer, you look at what the, what the rate is, and you think, God, you know, and whenever you have to pay the bill, it bites. And of course, that's what hurts, or gets people's attention, but it costs money to do what we all do.
Absolutely, and I'll show you that in just a minute.
And some units of government do it better than others. You know, I live in the city, that our taxes went up sixteen percent, their budget went up. You know, and again, some, and that certainly is a third of the property tax is, is the city, in my case, and then, of course, the school district, and then you've got the referendums, so that all plays into all of this, and, you know, people, people don't understand that oftentimes to the detail that they should or need to, because again, this is a doorboy, it pokes in one area, and it pops out in another area, and we have no control of that.
Some of the tax base increase is due to new construction and due to decertifications of TIF districts. If you calculated that out to see how much of that levy is supported by actual new construction, and TIF decertifications, it would be one point two million dollars of the five point four. And you can see here that the tax capacity is increasing by five point seven eight percent, and what we're showing here is a five point six percent increase in, in the levy. And so here's, to, to your point, Commissioner Bertram, you just made, here, here's what that levy would be on property that sees no valuation increase. So you see a slight decrease throughout all tax classifications, but of course, as we're talking about, this is more what it will look like, because all, many of those properties are seeing an increase in valuation. So you can see, mostly we're here a little under four percent, five percent residential homestead, seeing a little bit of an increase, and that's a little complicated by the homestead credit.
Market value.
Market value credit.
So, part of the reason I wanna see the cuts to the increases, because again, I think that's, to Commissioner Clark's point of what we're gonna do in the future, I think we are gonna have to start focusing on cuts, you know, moving forward in these uncertain times. And when I was on the council, it sounds easy, it was a two point two million dollar budget, two of us led, cutting two hundred thousand dollars, so ten percent out of a two million dollar budget, and nobody felt it, nobody complained. And we cut things out, we went back to the basics, you know, in a four-city, it's curb gutter, water sewer, fire, you know, the basics of that. And, and that, that's hard, and that's a challenge, but looking forward, one, we're dealing with this budget, but we're not gonna be done with this budget, and you're gonna start working on the next budget, and all these unknowns, but I, I think we are gonna have to start looking at cutting and carving out some of these things that we maybe got into that we don't need to get into, or that we can step out of. Just a philosophical point.
One of the things I try to do with that executive summary, and I know it looks the same every time you look at it, but it is different, it does reflect the changes that we've made since the last time, and I did try to highlight those areas, if you read through there, the areas that have changed are highlighted, and according to my colorblind eyes, it's yellow.
Which doesn't really mean anything, because I've seen your socks today, and again, just an attempt at being...
So, I, I put them on in the dark, so I don't, and then after I get them on in the lay, I still don't know what color they are. So, as we, as I said in the very beginning, we try to look forward, not only to the two thousand and twenty-six budget, but what this might mean for a future budget, this says what it means for twenty twenty-six, it really should say, what does it mean for twenty twenty-seven? But this budget does not really make use of fund balances, and I think that's a good thing, would preserve those fund balances for the future, other than about three hundred thousand dollars out of the project fund. We also know that in two thousand and twenty-seven, we're gonna have pretty similar employee cost increases. We've already, we already have agreements with all our bargaining users that will be at five percent. This budget has a three and a half percent increase in health insurance built into it, we're not, that's one little unknown again, that will, that we haven't set those rates yet. As you know, we're self-funded, we get a lot of advice from Gallagher and from our carriers about where our premiums should be, but in the end, we recommend, you know, the county itself sets those premiums, so we have a discussion to have about that in the near future. That three and a half percent is about eight hundred thousand dollars.
And we're changing carrier.
And we're changing carriers, and we're looking at that to be a savings of about, over where we would have been with Medicaid of about seven hundred thousand dollars, so making that transition is why we're perhaps are a little late in deciding what our premiums are gonna be. But the change was a good thing that you just approved this morning, definitely. Of course, there's uncertainty with what's gonna happen with some of the state and federal changes, particularly in the human services area, and that's why we have the million dollars set aside in contingency. million dollars set aside in contingency. We have about 700, we have $700,000 built in here to support the staff that we think are going to be dedicated to the construction of the GL Justice Center. I don't think that number will change in the future. I think that's probably about where that will need to be as we go through construction. Again, the project fund has a balance of about $21 million, and then the last bullet there is the county has no debt until we incur debt for the GL Justice Center. And that's, as I described earlier, where that million dollars came from to set aside. Since the last time you saw the budget, we reduced that 1.2 million to zero, but added the million dollars into the general fund contingency. In the beginning, when you saw the first budget, that levy was 1.7 million dollars. So, that, that shift eventually became $7 million, or $700,000. This is the quick summary. You know, this shows, again, that little bit of increase in the budget doesn't account for the $9 million or $9 million for town line roads, so it skews a little bit. But a 5.6 increase in the levy, a little more than that in the tax capacity, so the tax rate will actually go down a little bit. So, we have a few things in this budget that I would call unknowns, and I tried to highlight them, the railroad authority issue, what will, what will we really recommend there? We've got the fees, environmental service fees, that you will be dealing with at your next meeting. We have the health insurance premiums that we still need to establish, set those rates. We're having discussion very soon about what we want to do in the funding of patrol deputies and the fraud investigator, and try to pull a more complete recommendation together for you on that. You'll notice under the economic development line item, there's $100,000 in the last year's levy, and 110 this year, you'll be dealing with that in the future. That $10,000 is, is set aside for the Lewis Industries tax abatement if the board approves that. I think there may be a couple others, but I think those are some of the major things that you're, that some of the leadership team and the, and the budget committee are, will be dealing with in the next couple of weeks. Again, a reminder, we can bring you back an update at your next meeting, and then by the, your last meeting in September, you'll be needing to set that preliminary levy. We're happy to take questions and comments.
Commissioner Knott.
If you back up to the county trends page with budget and levy. Yeah. So, help me clarify, so in 2025, if you look at the intergovernmental funds, you know, you went from 66 million to 80, and then it dropped down by $8 million, but then our levy goes up. What, how does that shift occur?
I assume that's highway.
Yeah. Highway will change things so much in spending, right? Because you get a big project and all of a sudden it looks like your spending has gone up, or, or your spending's gone down. I'm assuming that's that, but we can get back to you on that.
We don't, the highway construction is not factored out of this. So, I mean, right away, I can see that that $9 million pass-through would be, would, would be in 2025 and not in 2026.
Yeah. Because what, what strikes me is, you know, the budget doesn't change by not even $1 million, well, a little over 1.2 million, but the levy goes up by 6 million.
Say that again.
Well, if you look at the total budget in 2025, it's 211 million, and we're going, proposing a $212 million budget, which is a 0.56% increase in the budget, but it's kind of ironic that the levy goes up by 5.6.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Persky.
Yeah, Steve, I saw that too. But if you look at 2025, you see the budget change going up to 11.4% and then, but then you also see the intergovernmental funds. Is, is there some, was there one project in there that accounts for that?
Town Line Road.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what that, that's what that is, but it, but it's washed because the intergovernmental funds are in there, but, but it is an increase in our budget. Of which, we're still hoping to realize Town Line Road.
Yes.
Yeah.
You can just see on this slide that if you exclude highway construction, you've got 2025 adopted of 169, 2026, 181. It's really a better comparison, and you can see the highway construction is about $10 million difference. I think that's the difference, maybe what we're looking at.
$10 million in intergovernmental is for Town Line Road.
Yeah.
Okay. So, sometimes we, you know, we want to be transparent and show the total budget, but at the same time, highway construction skews the number so much, so sometimes we pull those out, right?
Anything else? Keep up the, the good work.
Thanks for the input. Appreciate it. Where's the correlation?
So, that's not an action item. The next thing will be issues by commissioners. Who wants to start? I won't appoint today. I'm looking for volunteers.
I can start.
Okay, Commissioner Knott.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Persky and I participated in a conversation with some of the churches with regard to concerns about preparation for people who will be homeless when it's super cold this winter. They're looking for particular, they're trying to solve a particular problem, because churches were helping with part of this last year. It was good conversation. We, we talked a lot about what we do, a lot of concerns about the cuts that are coming in various ways from the state. And, you know, what, what, what may we be able to do together? I think for us, that was partially, how are we helping getting the state to actually be dealing with some more of this, because we are doing a lot already. And, and then there's several mayors were there as well, and Mayor Anderson from St. Cloud was bringing up, there are multiple groups that are focusing on this, could we get people to come together in one group? And then, also kind of a reminder that, you know, we're, we're there as human beings, and of course, we want to listen, which is a little different. But I think people walked away with, yep, we want to keep working together. What is the one group that maybe people could work off of? And recognizing the pretty awesome work that the shelters and the churches are doing, not just in this immediate area, but more broadly. I don't know, Joe, if you have anything else on that one.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Clark, you, I had it on my notes as well, and you, you had a good summary of that. And by all means, I do believe the faith community and the shelters can do a much better job by putting it in the hands of government. And so, anything we can do to foster that and, and assist that, I think we should. Because I look at what they're doing with the cost they showed on the emergency shelters, you know, expenditures around $40,000. Well, I think if we were to take down on IC, we'd probably have to move the decimal point. And, and so, those helping hands that are out there, by all means, we want to continue to foster that. They had also made the recommendation, can, can the city or the, can the county take on these homeless with the emergency shelters? Question is, where and how would we, we do that? I mean, that, that, I, I can't imagine us being prepared and having something ready for this winter and be able to also act spontaneous, depending upon how the weather was, is something we could actually do. But to, to come away from it, I, I just want to say that, you know, this is an issue that is regional. It's not Stearns County's problem. We've got Stearns, Benton and Sherburne. It's not St. Cloud's problem. We've got, you know, East St. Cloud, we've got Sock Rapids, we have Way Park, and it's, it's a regional issue, and we have to work cooperatively with all the partners there. And we had the, all the partners there from, from the counties and, and from the cities. So, hopefully, you know, again, we can get through a, a winter and, winter and, and, you know, take care of the needs of these folks.
We also tried to remind them that we're not the subject matter experts, and it's really important to, you know, there's a lot of work that's going on intergovernmentally, but also with community. We can certainly help spread the word. We could try to help advocate, particularly at the Capitol. And in case, Joe, I wasn't sure if it was clear to everybody, but I mean, part of what they were asking is, could we open up our lobbies? And that, that is not, from even a dignity standpoint, that is not going to be something that people are going to want, as Joe said, that could raise up all kinds of other things. But, yeah, the park that the church took on was a very small monetary amount, but boy, were they able to do a lot. And so, the question really is, what, what happens next? What are those solutions?
Just to inject something, thank you, Mr. Chair. Not, this is not going to help this winter, but Avivo is moving ahead with their plans. You did lobby to make a law change that will help their operating budget. Our partner counties in there, Sherburne and Benton, are talking about some ways to help contribute to make sure that that becomes a reality. We're going to be involved, because the facility would be involved, would be in Stearns County, with some staff interacting, I think. And so, my suggestion to them has been, if we're going to contribute, it would more, more likely be from existing funds for one time to help with their capital, and they do need some of those kinds of dollars to make that become a reality. So, extra ARP funds, for example, or opioid funds, something like that. Now, that hasn't come to you, because, you know, I have no idea what, really what the dollar amounts are, but that conversation is continuing, and I think that facility is going to become a reality, which would be 40-some beds and, and, you know, wraparound care for, for people and moving them out of homelessness.
And there, and there's two parts that, we, we have the whole homeless issue and shortage of housing, and then we also have the emergency shelters when it's cold. And they're two separate issues, but oftentimes working together. One part that was alluded to, just mentioned briefly, about the loss of some of the workers from Centricare. One of those was the nurse that was making visits to those emergency shelters. Somehow, you know, that was crucial, because that preventative care or immediate assistance that they're getting there keeps those people out of the emergency room. And we know that that's not the best appropriate way to be handling some of those situations. So, somehow resolving that collectively between the city and the counties, I hope, can be.
Commissioner Clark.
Yeah, or hopefully Centricare. I mean, we did have somebody from Centricare there that was going to go back and say, so what's the plan now? And then also with us having nursing programs, among others. And Dr. Williams, Aviva was brought up, you know, there was some concern about, you know, when are they really going to be starting? And one of the ideas that had been talked about before this group even came together was trying to figure out if there's a way, it would need to be the state, but to get a per diem reinstated. There used to be once upon a time per diems for shelters, and something like that would make a difference. We did talk about that that's really not a local government function, but that could be something perhaps that we could go and, and help advocate on. And then, as you're bringing up with the wraparound services and everything else, a lot of concern about services and funds being cut or looking like they're going to be cut in the next year, and that could very well increase people who are unsheltered. And while we were mostly focusing on individuals without minor children, or that we're not in a, put in harm, like as in a domestic violence situation or been trafficked, there's also acknowledgement about the greater number of kids and everything else. So, I mean, these are all folks who are parts of our communities, although we did also talk about, we've got some other counties, and we're not even talking the metro area, who are sending, the perception is that we're getting people coming. And then, kind of lastly, because I'm looking at a couple of board members who may say, yeah, but what about our areas? As we were talking about, there may be opportunities for housing, as Commissioner Persky was just talking about, in a different area, but how does transportation to, to employment, among other things, work? So, it reinforces how complicated this is, and just really, again, thankful for our staff and our community partners and, and the congregations.
I only have three issues. The main one is, I have to go to the bathroom. And the other thing is, October 7th, the meeting that we're going to have in Cold Spring, I would assume that we're going to, you know, do like special news releases on that for the radios and everything, because to bring attention that we're going to be moving and you'll have signs posted that we're not going to be here, but looking forward to that. And then, do we, in the budget, it came to me after we got off of that, do, do we do early retirement incentives? Have we done that in the past? Have we looked at, if we do some kind of a early retirement for folks that might be thinking of retiring, does that help this year, next year? It's not so much a question maybe to be answered, but to plant the seed. I don't know how many employees, I assume we know that, that are in that range. And then, of course, with the thought, if we do need to make cuts, would we potentially not have to rehire positions? You know, I, I don't know all that, but it came to me after that, so. Anything else?
I just.
Can you talk for five minutes?
This one should be short, but actually, Randy, I'm going to bring this on to you. In the open forum, we had it alluded to, and then yesterday on Chasm, approached again about paper ballots, same day voting, just so that people are aware of, of the reality of that, of what it would look like if we had to hand count all the things that are on a ballot, what it would cost, what the workers, the fatigue factor and all that. And we know the accuracy of machines, and also, those ballots are there for recounting if there's a question.
Right.
So, just to be proactive, I'd hope that it's not going to continue, but there's even seems to be a national message that people maybe want to head that way. And to me, it's, it's, it's approaching more chaos than less chaos, and more, opening up more fraud than less fraud.
Yeah, certainly, we have recounts, and then there's a mandatory recount after, after the election, and the machines are always right on, right? Once in a while, there'll be, you know, a human error where somebody will set a filling in the oval, they'll circle it, and of course, the machine can't catch that. But, you know, we'll count during that recount over 5,000 ballots, and there might be one or two changes because of human error, because of the way somebody marked it. But, yeah, they're, they're thoroughly tested.
Yeah.
And, yeah, they have not shown anything. Now, on the mail ballots, you know, that's a, we're giving the local jurisdictions that authority to decide if they want to do that or not. We won't have to do that. You know, taking those back actually is less work for us, right? By doing mail balloting, that causes the county more work and more time. So, we're, we're pretty neutral on where mail balloting goes.
Okay. Anything else? Maybe it's turned. If not, meeting is adjourned.